Well, the ledger there.
One of the reasons.
Yeah. That's on that.
Yeah.
Is it there?
Probably not.
What's that? Are we just supposed to all look at it?
I didn't realize.
I got three of them. I got three of them.
Oh, okay.
I looked fast.
I think I threw mine right there. Oh, no, I set it up here. I'll give you a minute.
Well, it is eight o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order and we'll stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone for public discussion?
I got one thing.
Yes. You want to come up to the podium and say your name, please?
Richard Miller. Going back to your higher know about cleaning staff. What you said last week, if you don't make that person a part-time employee till after the first pay period in July, they'll automatically get an eighty-one cent raise.
No, it has nothing to do. They're full time. It's not a part-time decision.
Here's what I'm saying. If you do not make it part-time for that first month and a half, if they go full-time instantly, they automatically get a full eighty-one percent or eighty-one cent raise. Then they could get two fifty cent raises plus the percentage raise the first of July. That's two dollars and sixty cents the first year in fourteen months.
So they would get that whether they're part-time or full-time?
Well, not a...
That's not gonna...
That's not what I was told a few years ago. The part-timers don't make everything that the others. But your discussion with keeping it to a dollar in the first year just went out the door. You've gone to two dollars and sixty cents in that first year instead of a dollar raise. So your discussion has gone through right out the door. And you guys can do anything you want. I can't believe that you can't make it a trial period to where they don't get eighty-one cents within sixty days. Because that's it. You went from a dollar raise in a year, in fourteen months, a dollar raise, it's two dollars and sixty cents. You guys are not being taxpayer-friendly whatsoever.
Thank you. Anyone else for public discussion? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Motion by Garmin.
Second.
Second by Stucker. Any discussion on the agenda and minutes dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimous. I will do some drainage right away here this morning. We have a reclassification hearing for D B sixty sub four improvement. And we'll need a motion to open the reclassification hearing. Motion by Stucker.
Second.
Second by Wacter. Any discussion on opening the hearing? Not a roll call vote, please?
Hask.
Yes.
Garner or Car- sorry, Garmin?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Apparently I haven't had enough coffee, sorry.
Uh, reclassification hearing open and go ahead, Tyler.
All right. Thank you. I can't promise that that'll be the odd problem, flood areas, all clear. Uh, well, good morning, all. This is the reclassification of benefits hearing for the uh, project that was completed on drainage district sixty sub four. This is the uh, there's been a report filed. That report has a breakdown of not only the main tile and the schedule associated with this project, but also all of the lateral facilities within the district as well. Those got split off and have their own schedules at this time. So I want to make clear that on those reports, only the schedule being uh, proposed for assessment is the first one. There's a, there's a dozen or more schedules in there. The only one for this project is, is that first one listed for the main tile. So we'll get into this. What I have displayed here is the district in the red line. The facilities then are these, the black lines with the label names on them. The main tile that we're looking at outlets into the open ditch here and actually ends now with these two uh, spur lines at the end that catch both sides of the road. Before that tile really serpentine across the road, uh, we, we minimize that by, by putting these two prongs at the end of it. Um, so the, the project that was completed is that main tile. Everything else are laterals. The map that is displayed up here is one of the um, amounts of data that's used when figuring these assessments. That is the LiDAR data. LiDAR data is aerially obtained elevations that are, I believe this was the utilizing the newer batch of LiDAR that was obtained uh, starting in twenty twenty. That is two points for every square meter of ground. So uh, a plane flies the, over the, the ground, shines the laser to the ground, receives, takes, records how long it takes that laser to get back to the plane. That gets relative elevations. This is broken down to, like I said, two points for every square meter. The relief is shown in the difference in color. Reds and the brightest reds are the highest highs. The blues are the lowest lows. And you see then the color gradient between those points. That is the first bit of information that we use. Um, for these classifications, they're a matter of factors. There are five main factors that we use. There's area, how much is of a given parcel, subdivided parcel is within the watershed. The proximity to the facility. How much of the facility is being used? The need for drainage or the wetness factor, how wet that ground is. That's based on soil type characteristics. And then lastly, what is the land being used for? We make a uh, comparison for all subdivided parcels when compared to agricultural land. So the distances, the factors that are um, measurements of distance are based on the LiDAR data as displayed here. From that LiDAR data, we have a computer model that takes and it analyzes every square meter with every square meter around it and determines how water flows through that district. What's displayed now is that subdivision and model of the watershed. Zoom in here a little so that it's easier to see. The blue lines represent the flow paths, how water makes its way through the district. The black lines that surround every one of those blues are the subcatchments or the subwatersheds within the larger benefited watershed. This is how we take and divide up the watershed based on the topography for the benefited areas within the district and where they're located based on the facility's location that we are examining. So all of these factors are run for every facility individually to get that facility's schedule of benefits and then put into the report. The first ones we go through, of course, are the main because that's the only amount that can be shown because everyone benefits from the main. We have to show all of that in, in one uh, one map. And we break it down from there. This takes into account the facility locations as well as culvert or bridge crossings through the road. The one thing that it does not take into account because we do not know where they are is private tiles. So anything that would potentially cross uh, watershed lines, district boundaries uh, or, or make significant changes in natural water flows or flows based on those facilities, hasn't been accounted for. We just simply, the district does not know, I do not know. Without the input from landowners, we're unable to make those, those changes. Then this is the second main piece of information that drives the reclassifications. This is the soil wetness based on soil characteristics. So those get broken down into four types, high, low, wet and swamp grounds. The uh, swamp grounds primarily are the, the wettest and are displayed on the uh, map here as the, the reds. Then the um, so uh, let me go in the, the reverse order, the one I'm more comfortable with. High soils are green and blue. Um, low soils then are the lighter green. The uh, wet soils are in orange and swamps are in red. So when the need for drainage is discussed, this is what is driving that factor. Then when we look, start getting into these factors, the first is proximity. Again, because we're examining the main, the higher factors, the proximities that get a, a one or the highest amounts are centered right along that main tile. Everything else that's further away, that has to use other facilities to get to that main tile have a lower factor. That gets taken to a per parcel weighted average of those catchments to get the parcels proximity factor as displayed here. Again, it can be seen by the color gradient, reds being highs, greens being lows, that the parcels along the main tile alignment get the highest factors for proximity. Next is the use, how much of the facility is used. This is most often described as a factor of length, but what it really is for tile facilities is a factor of dollar per foot. Because the lower ends take more money per foot to construct than the upper ends, it's a factor of, of length combined with dollars to get the use factor. Those then with the highest use factor are those that utilize the entirety of the facility on the upstream end. That, just like proximity, gets taken to a per parcel layer displayed here. The wetness based on the soil type characteristics are also then brought to a per parcel layer as displayed here. Those that had the wetter soils, the more red from the displays of soils on the previous map, uh, are those that show up here with the, the highest, the wettest soils. And then the land use. Everything that is being used solely for agricultural purposes is given a one. Because these factors are multiplied together, the one does not change how much those uh, parcels benefit from the facility. It is then uh, a higher percentage for land use is given to subdivided parcels that have higher hard surface, impervious areas. Uh, thirty percent increase for those uh, with anything under fifty percent hard surface and one point six for everything with more than fifty percent hard surface as well as the uh, paved road that goes through the, the center there or center-ish of the district. All of these factors then are multiplied together to get the units of benefit. The mathematical number of how these parcels benefit from the main tile. Those units of benefit are then used to create a classification. Classification is one of the things that the, that I O code requires that a uh, reclassification schedule have. Classification to me is a little bit of an outdated metric because it's displayed as a percent and when people see it, they can potentially panic because your classification could be fifty percent. That's fifty percent of what the highest parcel gets. It's not saying that that parcel pays fifty percent. Because what classification is, is it's everyone's units of benefit divided by the highest units of benefit taken times one hundred to get to a percent. So the highest classification is a one hundred, one hundred percent, they benefit the most. But they do not pay one hundred percent of the project. They, they pay the most based on everyone around them. Everyone else's percentage then is of that highest percentage. So in the reports, not only do we provide the classification, but we also provide then what the share of the recommended uh, rounded assessment value is. And we also provide a percent of the total amount on those schedules as well. That's a, a, a cleaner value to look at while also providing the classification to suit the requirements of the code. We also provide and make a map for a classification per acre. This takes the size out of the, the calculation, the display and changes the color gradient to show that you do find the more of your benefit on the upper end and uh, has the edge parcels fall in line for review a little better when you look at those uh, color gradients. We then also have an assessment and an assessment per acre display. This is based off of, on this map. It's based off of every one hundred thousand dollars worth of total project cost. So uh, for display purposes, the report has on the uh, scheduled to be assessed has the actual project dollars with um, has the to-date interest worked into it, the engineering total project costs all in on that schedule. And then because the code outlines that one of the biggest inequities in a standing schedule is that all of the facilities are paying on one schedule as this district was. Those facilities then are during this process split into their own schedules. So now if work is done on any of those other facilities, it's not out of one big schedule, but out of all of the individual schedules. Those again have a, an example dollar amount on it, but they are not up for assessments at this time. We display then multiples on this map so that we limit the number of maps. But the factors uh, repeat, they go again for all of these different facilities throughout the district. Uh, the factors then again are all the same. The proximity, weighted average for proximities. The use. The use per, per parcel. The wetness. And land use, all two units and eventually classification. This process in my opinion is one of the better for considering classifications because it takes a majority of human subjectivity out of the equation. It's mathematical, it's repeatable. It's something that if all of it was lost and I started with the same data again, I'd come up with the same numbers for presented uh, assessments. However, this was also because classification requires that not only there'd be an engineer, but there'd be two disinterested landowners from the county to serve as commissioners as well. This report was also gone over and reviewed by, uh, with Jake Goji and Ken Lucatol. They have, they have signed and submitted this commissioners' report with me as well. That has been presented to the trustees. The trustees ultimately do have the final say for any sort of uh, adjustments based on landowner inputs. So there is that uh, opportunity as well. We have then the process as it goes all the way through and then repeats again for the proximities for a different batch of district facilities. And, and so on through to the creation of these schedules as it was done for the main, as it was done for all the facilities prior until every one of those facilities has been accounted for. So that was the reclassification process, how we came up with the values that we have as the commissioners presented in the reclassification, the commissioners' report and what our recommendations for projects split are. That was rather fast and it's a it, it's a, it's a bit of a complicated process from a, a an amount of data and an amount of information used. But again, in my opinion, having looked at a couple of different methods of reclassification, this one certainly when compared to the original way of assessment, which was a lot more uh, subjective, much more by feel, done, can't fault the way things were done in the early nineteen hundreds when they did not have at their advantage the technologies that I do. Um, but this is, this is much more of a data-driven process. So. Any questions, comments from anyone?
I guess I could make a comment though. I realize what you're doing there and why you're doing this, but at the same time, there's a matter of return on your investment, so to speak. And if you start figuring that for me, I had three, four hundred acres in this and it's over fifteen hundred dollars an acre for an investment. And I'm at the end of the line there. I got a neighbor lady that owns a hundred acres. And just for the fun of it, my son and me sat down yesterday and figured out what she's going to pay per acre for twenty years. And she's got about a hundred acres of land she owns. She's got about seventy-five, eighty of it is in this drainage district. Her assessment comes out to, as we figured it, right at two hundred and eighty dollars an acre for the next ten years or twenty years. If you add in, or two seventy, I think it was, if you add in the real estate taxes, she's gonna be paying close to three hundred bucks an acre for the twenty years on seventy-some acres and she only owns a hundred. So uh, in terms of valuation, it doesn't come out very good for her. For me, it was, I think, other than other words, she's not gonna make a damn dime if she's over seventy years old like I am. For me, it comes out to fifteen hundred ninety-two dollars sixty-five cents an acre on three hundred and sixty acres or three sixty-one. I don't know what that comes out to per year, but it's over uh, well, twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand, just for the principal every year on all that land. Fifteen hundred ninety-two dollars an acre, or per acre comes out to about eighty bucks an acre plus interest on all the land. So in terms of valuation, it's not feasible. For her, she, she's got maybe twenty acres out of that eighty that they didn't get anything off of. So you can say what you want to say about the valuation on it, but for her, it's a real losing process and for me, it's not much better. Now down the line ways, you get a guy that's got a spot that drowns out, okay. He's paying six, eight hundred bucks an acre for all of his land and he's gonna get that back in terms of uh, it doesn't take very much, maybe thirty bucks an acre per year with the plus interest. I guess I'm looking at it in terms of he's got a lot more ability to repay it than the people like her down the line that'll never get anything out of it. I don't know. That's just a comment. I know you're not gonna change anything on it, but good God, she's seventy-some years old. She's never gonna make a damn dime off of two-thirds of her land for the rest of her life. So kinda heartbreaking for her this, the way it looks to me. And for me, it's something that I think we figured a hundred and twenty-five bucks an acre per year for twenty years on all my land. Well, I'm seventy years old. That's not gonna ever come out on it. So and I admit I was for it and I'm still for it, but at the same time, the way the program is set up and your benefits are set up, some people get maximum benefits from the tile but no benefits economically, let's put it that way. Just a comment.
Yeah, I, just to speak to that, thank you for, for the comment. That's uh, and I, I'm open for, certainly for suggestions on, on changes.
I don't know if you can make any changes to it.
I, and that, and that's
At the same time, I've got neighbors that's got close to the tile that are paying a minimal amount and they're losing their drainage, or they're losing the droughted out spots, pretty much all of them. And all of us should lose the droughted out spots, but they lose ten acres of droughted out spots. I lose ten acres of droughted out spots. They pay a minimal amount, I pay a maximum amount. We're all losing about the same amount of droughted out spots. So just because they're closer to the main, I don't know. I know your formula is what it is and I'll pay it, but at the same time, it seems kinda sometimes down the line ways, those folks aren't paying very much and getting a lot more benefits per acre than what I'm getting. Or the same benefits per acre with a minimum amount of payment just because they happen to be closer to the drainage. So I don't know. I agree, my land is pretty wet and swampy, but I'm probably out of the three hundred and some acres on an average year. What they say there was three hundred and sixty acres on an average year. I would lose on average year, maybe twenty acres at the most. Probably last year was fifty or sixty, but I don't know. I'm not saying you should change it for me, but I'm just saying that in terms of benefits, seems like the people, some people have much better benefit with a lot less cost. I just feel sorry for her because she's, like I said, in her seventies and she's not gonna get a damn thing out of it in her lifetime and it's gonna be close to three hundred an acre when you get the drainage assessment and the, and the uh, taxes, the real estate taxes she pays is close to three hundred bucks an acre because we figured it out yesterday and that's on. I don't know, is this, when you get this twenty-year loan, is that amortized out over twenty years or you pay the, you don't pay the principal plus all the interest first year, just amortize over twenty years?
It's spread evenly, isn't it? Yeah, it's amortized over twenty.
Oh, that helps a little. Pretty much we're getting off inflation going.
Right. And, and I understand your concerns. Um, I guess one of the ways I would maybe phrase it a little bit differently, um, when I kind of wrap everything that Tyler has said in this room and other situations hundreds of times, but when I kind of put that all together, yes, being at the farther end is more expensive, but one thing you can maybe compare to is if you were to build your own system, a hundred percent private, just to serve your land to get from where you're at to the ditch, those use those use factors kind of take that into account because you may have, say you need a twenty-four inch pipe to serve your three hundred acres, and I'm just pulling numbers out for the sake of it. But if you need that to get the capacity that would be in equivalent here, but you need to go a mile and a half or two miles to get to an outlet versus going a hundred feet to get to an outlet, the cost difference there is what the formulas all combined kind of represent. And you also have this as one piece of the cost for drainage because there's also the cost of maintenance or any future improvements for the open ditch. So you have two pieces of benefits that you pay for and everyone would be in the same category there, but you pay differently in respect. So the farther away from the ditch you are, the less you pay towards the ditch because those close to the ditch have easier access. And, and another thing, I know it's, it's spread over twenty years for the terms of financing and that's laid out in the code and all that, but a lot of the, I guess, one of the big things I look at is these systems are a hundred years old or better on average across the county and I would hope and expect that anything substantial like this that we're doing now lasts a comparable amount of time, if not better, hopefully more. Uh, so yes, it's, it's maybe difficult to pay for in certain situations in twenty years, but, um, it's not like the benefit is just gonna disappear in twenty years either. And that's just kind of the reality of the situation and it's, I, I don't know if there's any way that we can calculate for that any differently.
I understand that, but at the same time, if they'd just started the dredge ditch two miles closer to me, I would be, I would, I would be paying a small fraction.
But, but you paid for her ditch too.
I, I wouldn't have paid for the ditch, I would've been somebody a long time ago. And then, and it's the same way, I'm afraid this neighbor lady is gonna have to sell her farm. I'm not joking either. I know the people and I, I haven't talked to her about it, so I'm afraid she's gonna have to sell her farm. I won't have to, but I also know that the benefits will last a hundred years and maybe I'm lucky, my son owns the farm, but in terms of, if I was to try to sell my farm today, it would've dropped in value compared to two years ago. So that's the other side of it, because they would look at it and say, whoa, look at that drainage assessment, it's two hundred thousand and a hundred and twenty acres and my price of land would go down, not up. So that's kind of backwards too. You know, and the neighbor's over there apparently did sell their farm. They had two hundred and eighty acres, they sold, I think it was two years ago, they sold it and the other neighbors who's in it, he's gonna have to pay for it, but they sold it 'cause they heard this was gonna go through, so they actually sold their farm. I don't expect you to change anything, I just want you to understand where I'm coming from on 'cause it's not a real money maker for me in my age, that's for sure. And I'm afraid it may cause, like I said, neighbor lady had to sell her farm, so. 'Cause it's very high and, and, and she gets, like I said, maybe twenty acres of it that did drown out, out of seventy acres that's in this area. So it's a big vantage for her, but it's not a worthwhile advantage for her to do this, that's what I'm getting at. She'd have been better off putting in this ERP and said hell with it, that's what, you know. And that's the other shame of it, is that sometimes you just should forget about it and say, we're not gonna farm it anymore, it's not worth it. I'm glad it's done, don't get me wrong, and I'll pay for it, but I'm just saying that at times it looks kinda like wasn't a real, it ain't, it ain't never gonna make me any money in my lifetime, let's put it that way. It's gonna take the rest of my lifetime, probably pay it off unless, like I said, be out of inflation and I can look at it and say, well, that wasn't so bad ten years from now, if I'm still alive. I don't expect you to make any changes, don't ask, I'm not asking for that, but I should feel sorry for that neighbor lady of mine, 'cause she's still bankrupt, she practically, I know she don't get much rent from her own something, farm, so.
When do you have to sign? When does that have to be done by?
August, August first, so that they're.
So if you sign up for it, you wanna pay it off ahead of time?
You can.
You can't, no penalties or anything?
Right.
Okay.
You pay it off any time, yeah?
Yeah.
There's no penalty.
Even if you sign, and there's no penalties, even if you take the waivers, you, you're not, you pay out of that and no penalties, nothing like that, so it's, yeah.
I don't have anything profound to say that you have thought of, I apologize for insulting anybody. We had a farm, I farm, a private tile, uh, and there was, it was swampy and everything and he had an opportunity to get in on main and it cost him, um, over two thousand dollars an acre for the main alone. And he said, how do I justify this? And I said, I can't kid you, I don't, it's hard to justify if you can get two hundred fifty dollars rent untiled to three hundred tiled or three fifty tiled. You know, it's hard to justify. The only way you're gonna justify it is wake up in twenty years and say, I'm glad I did it twenty years ago, but.
Oh, I'm not gonna wake up in twenty years.
You and I can talk about it together somewhere.
Waking up will be long gone.
I, I understand, I understand.
And I think, I mean, your point about waking up in twenty years and seeing if it's worth it is, is probably pretty valid, but even, even in a year or two or three, if we have a really wet year, you're probably gonna be pretty happy it's there. And there's another project that's part of the district is a one-inch coefficient, right? Southeast of along here, um, eighty, eighty-four. And there was, there were some people that were very upset with that project from start to finish and after a couple of years of big drains, not quite as upset, so. It, the proof will be in the pudding as it, as it works and, um, as it does the job that it was intended to do, so.
I guess what I'm afraid of is I've got a hundred and forty acres there that's kinda wet, doesn't have the main going through it and am I gonna have to go back and start down at the main and redo all my lines to get them big enough to handle that hundred and forty acres? 'Cause that'll be another big project for me to spend. I don't know, it's got the twelve or fifteen inch tile that comes out half a mile from the end of my fence line. And do I have to go back and redo my sub-main, if you wanna call it that, the private tile in order to get it big enough to drain my land that's now there? I don't, it's gonna be interesting to find out if it works or not. But is my tile, it's already there, big enough to handle the water that's coming out of my land? It's quarter, half a mile from the main, so, where my fence line is, I'm a one hundred and forty acre farm, so.
Well, to some degree, the, the easy answer is it depends, but if.
I don't know if it's big enough to handle all that water that comes out of my farm, even if there is a main, it will handle it, so.
One, one of the big advantages you'll see though, if, if your main was, whether it was undersized for a one-inch capacity or not is maybe irrelevant, but if, if your private tile was not able to function at its max capacity because of previous limitations in the district facilities, you would see an immediate benefit from.
Oh, I, oh, I mean, I'm glad, I think it'll be better, it would be good enough to avoid that hundred and forty acres, you know, ten, ten spots drowned out on and on the way here like last year, so. It's, and it doesn't have the main going through it, so. The other land, like God, does have the main going through it, but I don't know. It'll be interesting to see how much of a benefit it is. So far, it's worked real good this spring, right? And no rain, no, mom's good, enough to get any water standing, so. That's the other problem, is some years, most years, you don't lose anything on the farm and some years, there's ten different spots drowned out, so, I don't.
And how long is it, and how long is the contractor liable for something that wasn't hooked up properly?
So for, uh, the maintenance period, it's a year from the acceptance of the work and that we're still, we, that hasn't happened, so that year isn't, isn't taken. Um, as far as getting connections hooked up, that is not like after a year when, when something comes around with, that's it, we're done, no more hooking up to the system. But I would imagine.
That you're, you're gonna be liable if it's after a year, if it's something that keeps, it's just wet and you wanna dig it up, you can find out that your lateral has never been hooked up properly. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm.
I'm just curious, I've seen, there's been several that haven't been hooked up on that main already and have been dug up by another contractor to hook them up properly. And what I'm getting at, there's gonna be more, I'm sure.
And that, I'm not, I'm never surprised when a few of these are, aren't missed as part of the projects. It, it happens, uh, but they get taken care of and addressed as they're found. As, as areas crop up, they're always found, fixed, taken care of, when, whenever that is.
I just can't understand, like the ones we, I got involved in too, they were eight-inch tile. I mean, how do you miss an eight-inch tile when you're, when they're, when they're re-crushing the tile on the way back? This is something I think is my opinion, they need to do a better job because they're just taking the tops off the way it looked to me a lot of it. And if you don't see something, you're not gonna see it.
I, the, I will say, the ones that are obviously much easier to find are the ones that are on the construction side. Those ones get very clearly lanced, found, reconnected. It is the ones on the, on the alternative side, on the, on the existing main side that are harder to find and.
What did they do on those, um, on that road, those are four hundred and eightieth avenue? That's, they'd say it drowned on that road like four times on the original main, three times? I mean, it's, I mean, it's pretty damp up in there right now. What if something's hooked up in there that they, you know, if they bypassed all that, you know? Uh, what'd they do with that tile that was underneath the road? I mean, that, I mean, I know it fell there under the road, but when they crossed it three different times there. What I'm getting at, how'd they shut that off? Or did they hook that all up to the original, to the new main?
They, everything is hooked up to the, because we, we constructed on both sides of the road, there, so there would've had to have been something that was just.
They would've been hooked in the new main?
No, things coming from the north and south were, they didn't cross, where it crossed underneath the road.
In Moms Field there, there was an intake right along the ditch. Reichels, I caught him here, what, two weeks ago when they dug your field there? They admitted, they missed the hookup in both your field, Doug's, or Billy's field, and they didn't even hook that intake up. They came out later two weeks ago and put a new intake in, 'cause they admitted, when they dug down and tried to find it, it was not, so they missed, wherever that crossed the road at, they never dug on between, the, okay, the tile started here, crossed the road, okay, you put laterals here. They never dug anywhere, anything attached to this tile that crossed the road, attached into that tile, they never went there and found it. They put a brand-new intake in, they called, when I was picking up seed, they said, well, it's not attached. I, when I tried to dig that here a while ago, the intake was just missing and it was just a mud, so. So they dug it up down there, they said that never got attached to the new main. So they just put a new one in the field.
Okay, I, I, and I've heard about the.
And then they dug, in Doug's field there, they dug and they said that was not hooked?
Yeah, that was pretty wet too.
And then Billy's field there, Mike's, they dug that up and they said that got missed too. So anything that, where that was crossing in and out, all they did was lay the new pipe down. They did not dig to find out where that was crossing, so if your tile came in and caught somewhere where it was crossing, it was not rehooked anything. They just crushed that tile, you know what I mean, so it's not hooked to the main anymore, so.
We'll, we'll need to, to discuss this further for making sure.
I'm just telling you what the workers, you know what I mean, 'cause I caught them on the road and talked to the two guys from Reichels.
Yeah, I'll, uh, obviously that's not right. We'll need to get that, that'll need to be addressed, the project hasn't been accepted, so that's, we're still.
I know, they were out there and fixed something one day.
They said it wasn't hooked in.
Yeah, I don't doubt that. I know the one on Wolf's side was hooked in, or they went under the road and I think they built the old tile that they went.
The intent, the intent of going, not crossing the road.
I understand what your idea was there.
And so, the, the, uh, the intent of doing both of those forks on either end was to intercept everyone's private tiles and it won't be done until that's.
It's been finished.
Right. That's good to know.
Yeah, there was, like you said, three different spots that weren't drained at all, so.
Yeah, like what you're saying or whatever.
I don't know who told them about it, I suppose, was it you or was it?
I talked to Kyle there a while ago, so, but they were out doing something in the other.
And with every one, they've been, contract's been directed to go back.
Yeah, he's not kidding, I mean, but I'm just saying, did they miss any other, you know what I mean? What else didn't get attached to?
If I, if I knew what was.
Usually they, usually they show up, you don't hook one up sooner.
Yeah, but the, the paradoxical thing about it is if I knew the ones they didn't get hooked up, they'd get them hooked up, right? So that's, that's kind of the situation, um.
Yeah, and, and we'll just have to address those as they come up or as they get found, but we'll, we'll do what we can to make sure that that does get accomplished at the end of the day. Is there any other questions or comments on the reclassification aspect here? Anything else you have, Tyler?
On the reclass, no.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Stucker to close the public hearing. For second. Oh, Garmin, second by Garmin. Any discussion on closing the reclass hearing? If not, roll call vote please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Thank you all for your comments and, and, uh, moving forward here with.
Tyler, do you need action to.
Yeah.
It would be the acceptance of the reclassification report.
As presented.
As, as presented or with any cullation.
Yeah. I would make a motion to accept the reclass report as presented.
Okay, motion by Stucker to accept. And then second, okay, second by Haas. Any discussion? Roll, if not, roll call vote please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Okay, thanks Tyler for that and.
Thank you all for coming.
Landowners for coming in, yeah.
If you guys have anything that feel like to be addressed, feel free to get ahold of me and we'll get it taken care of from there.
Yep.
Okay. And I think we've got a.
Ready for lateral?
Yeah, acknowledgment report for DD four, that eleven?
Yes, and I will.
Have a good day, guys.
These handed out. We'll get electronic copies of this over too, it's just, there's been, as I get into it, there was a, an option that had been brought up to me for potential improvements that I could see being rather contentious and I wanted to have a chance to speak towards that before the information really got too far. So, got a couple of copies here for the records. This is the report, rec, uh, as the answer for the petition that was filed for the investigation of an improvement project for the drainage district number four, lateral eleven tile system. This is the same system that was examined and is still being, um, there will be work done that goes through the US Fish and Wildlife Group, uh, Service land that the Union SLU had secured a grant for the replacement of two damaged lines that go through that ground. As such, for background information attached to this improvement report, is the report written for that, uh, the review of the replacement plan that had been done for that, uh, those two lines? The lines examining again is. The lines examining again is Drainage District number four and Subdrainage District number nine laterals eleven and submain, uh, the sub nine main tile. After the report on that replacement, there was a petition that was signed and submitted that is attached as appendix B to this report for, uh, the review of an improvement project. The examination of the existing lines, essentially from the Union Slough, the US Fish and Wildlife ground to the outlet, it was found that the drainage coefficient, or the amount of water over the landscape that could be drained in a twenty-four hour period of time, was at or below zero point one five inches per day. Uh, less, uh, obviously than less than the current drainage coefficient recommendation of a zero point five inches per day, or a half inch per day. So we examined the conditions that would be needed to provide the, at least the half inch drainage coefficient. What was found was that based on, uh, topography, the ground elevations, a tile improvement project could be performed with realignment to gain cover to get the half inch drainage coefficient if a sixty inch pipe was utilized. That is, uh, a little, uh, we'll just say approximately two miles of installation. There is a, the preliminary plans that are attached to this report outline that proposed route. There is on the. Landowner page, second page of the preliminary plans. The old route is what the proposed in this plan shows. The parallel lines that travel through the district with the chevrons on them are the existing tile lines. In the lower sections where the cover is the worst, the realignment, the, we stay within this, generally uh, within the same landowner groups, but there is, uh, a deviation from that alignment as much as nine hundred feet from there. Uh, that again is to gain the cover over top of, of the pipes. That estimated construction cost for that tile improvement project was, uh, two million four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. There was also discussions, this is not something that. When you get to larger tile size improvements, there is a point where the construction cost between tile and open ditch becomes comparable. Uh, however, open ditches, especially those that would be bisected or have the land split, are oftentimes far less popular than a tile process. Um, it was asked of me from some landowners in the district to look at at least what the cost of that would be. There is a, a estimate of costs in there. Admittedly, because of when that was asked, it is not, uh, it is, it is most notably lacking any road crossings that would be required in the event that an open ditch was considered. Um, but it does have some considerations for right of way as well as severance damages for the total losses of, of, uh, land values of those farms that would be, uh, bisected. All that is to say is that, um, there are, of course, with any improvement projects, additional considerations. Uh, repairs are mandatory, improvements are, are not, they could be stopped with remonstrance. Uh, the second consideration would be that with any of these projects, there's the strong likelihood of, uh, wetland conversion if they exist within the district. From, um, farmed wetlands into converted wetlands, which would be potentially, uh, high mitigation costs for those impacted landowners. And then lastly, with any improvement is, uh, the component of reclassification of benefits for that new system and how the landowners are benefited. That's for any of the improvement projects. If an open ditch was to be looked at, there is then the additional steps of, um, right of way. At least, a- as well as again, the, the popularity of, of such, uh, of facility. So it's because of all of those things that I, I would not, without serious consideration and input from landowners, consider an actual open conduit as opposed to the, to the closed one. But it is something that the district certainly could, could do. Else, the more typical tile improvement project would be for the installation of the upsized pipe for, uh, approximate, that, approximately two miles or to the junction box that is south of the US Fish and Wildlife ground. There also is the advantage that based on the profiles that, uh, this is set to, you do gain at the junction box, uh, more than a foot and a half of, of elevation. There is, there is some lost elevation from the floor of that junction box to what the flow line of this line would be. So it's, it's kind of twofold, not only do you gain depth at the upstream end, you also gain then the potential capacity. So that is the report response to that petition. There will then need to be a, a hearing on this at least forty days from the acceptance of the, the report. I have spoken with the, uh, the Union Slough on the drop dead date of any grants that they have. I, I wish I had the email correspondence with me, but it is, uh, fall of twenty twenty-six when everything has to be spent and, and, uh, the date I, in my mind, I believe is October first, twenty twenty-six when everything is. Is done and has to be spent, but that money is secured, it is there for what was discussed in the, uh, appendix A report of this improvement report, so. That is what I have on this one.
Okay. Any questions for Tyler? Today anyway?
I, I anticipate quite a bit of input from, from landowners, um, as, as should be the case. And, uh, I, I, I say this at all the hearings, but I'd like to say that I'm not, I'm not a salesman in front of any of this. Uh, we'll get what the landowners want, what the district thinks is in its best interest. Um, but whatever way it goes, and doing nothing is a valid option too. So this is, this is just, uh, what could be done, what, what would be needed, and from there, gather input and, and input certainly from the board as the trustees, so.
Thank you much.
Do you have a date in mind or what would, or what point do we actually be?
I, it's March, did. Sorry, I, I may not have brought up any potential dates. Do you have, do you know how far out the forty days?
June.
It would be, I was gonna say, it would be June tenth.
How about seven? Do we wanna go right on it or do we wanna go week after maybe? I don't know that it makes any difference.
No, I don't know.
We, we could go, I, I have, uh, just double check here. Sure that the seventeenth. I, I am, I am open to the seventeenth.
Okay, I'd maybe aim for the seventeenth then. Um, I thought I had while we were, we were going through your discussion there. With the potential of an open ditch or a new open ditch concept being discussed, maybe an extra round of notification might be helpful for landowners if we send the normal notification upfront and then say a postcard two weeks in advance or a week in advance just for extra to try and inform.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how you, noti- notification has certainly been something that's come up.
It has.
And, uh, I don't know really the best way to combat that. Um. Ultimately, the notices are sent, it, it's, there's not much that we in this room can do for the recognition of receiving those notifications.
I mean, we could send it in certified mail, but it's a little over.
One, right.
And expensive.
Right, yeah.
That's, that's where I, I mean, a quite postmark, closer to might be.
The notices are set twenty days before, they need to be postmarked twenty days before, so you're sending another one?
And it's not gonna be legal notification?
It wouldn't be, it'd be on top of the requirements.
And, and I'm, I mean, I'm not, not an attorney either, but I, my concern would be getting the two confused and having, uh, an issue of what was and was not the legal notice if somebody, if, if somebody gets the, you know, it's just.
Yeah.
There's always the records that the notifications have been sent, but, um. There, there is also, you know, certainly the, the opportunities for increased notifications after that, but the big question here is, is.
After the ship will sail.
Right, right, um. I.
I don't know if anyone else has any ideas for.
I would say to, it sounds like it could be a confusing thing. You know, we're doing the legal notice that we should do away.
For, for any, rather, just anecdotally, I have talked to not only the number of petitioners, but there has been a decent amount of landowner interest on this. That is to say, people are anticipating a discussion on this. Uh, I don't know is that we're going to be taking many in this district by surprise. This has also with the repair been a, a, a noted thing, so. I, I think, I think between the, the legal requirements for notice and word of mouth, there will be, there will be much, much interest in, in a lot of note of this.
That's probably fair, I was just trying to.
I, I mean, it's, I think it's a very valid, you know, I, it's always a concern, how do you get appropriate notice out? I don't wanna do anything to, ever to hide or not be transparent on this, so. But, but then again. If we said the right thing, is it better than stop before we do something more and save the wrong, sometimes, just my sense.
Any thoughts on time, do we wanna do it in the beginning of the day? Technically done here, it's a ten, but.
I, I've been a fan of ten o'clock.
That's fine with me then.
Seventeenth at ten?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd make a motion to accept the, uh, or acknowledge the report and set date time for public hearing at June seventeenth at ten.
Okay, got that, all right. Any second to Kyle's motion?
Sure.
Second by Haas. Any discussion? Can you just do a whole paper, I? Okay, all right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed name? Motion carries unanimous. Thanks Tyler and.
Thanks all.
Enjoy your week.
Yes, same to, same to you all.
We've got.
For your time here this morning.
Do that. Got a couple of repair requests and we'll go ahead with the culver.
Yeah, probably. Tom, I'll be ready for him in a couple minutes, yeah. Yep, I got that one here.
I didn't give any yet, did I?
Hey Doug, it's Josh here in the boardroom.
I'm just taking a quick cue.
Discussing that culver here in just a couple of minutes.
Okay, thanks, bye.
Yeah.
Because that's gonna be a one thing. That was gonna be one thing, so I think we should take a break before that.
Five minute break before that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's good for everybody.
Yeah, that's fine, Doug can, Doug will be ready.
So. Okay, uh, go ahead with repair requests, Amber?
Uh, yep, uh, number twenty-one, um, is, um, Drainage District number one oh eight main tile in the southeast of the southwest quarter, it's twenty-four inch tile. Um, it was a washout and, um, the broken tile needed repaired. It's, it's actually already taken care of. Uh, I talked to a local landowner and, um, he was going to handle that, it's a sewer. So, um, he wanted to continue with field work, so that's actually already been repaired. And then, um, number twenty-two, uh, Drainage District, District one fourteen, the northwest of the northwest, uh, Plum Creek Township, section twenty-five, is on lateral twenty-five, it was a broken tile. Uh, Reichels was actually in the field and, um, found that there was another portion that was broken and so that was taken care of, so, um, the, both of mine have already been repaired.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, uh, mine was number thirteen in section twenty-three of Ramsey that we've discussed a couple of times now. Don't know if anyone has any questions or thoughts on it, otherwise, did everyone receive the correspondence I shared in regards to this?
Yep.
Then I guess I'd.
All right.
We can, I would suggest we act on these separate, so we can act to group members, I would say, and then follow up with action for these with separate motions would be my recommendation.
Okay, so we can have a motion to approve Supervisor Garmin's request then?
So.
Motion by Stecker, second by Haas. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed name? Motion carries unanimous. And then, another motion for, um, taking care of Supervisor Stecker's requests at a later date? Is that, or no?
I would, I'd make a motion to, um, appoint Bolton and Mank and, um, Bob Goodwin to this repair request.
Okay. Motion to appoint Bolton and Mank and Bob Goodwin as attorney on this repair request. Any discussion on that motion? Oh, we didn't get a second, did we? All right, second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Haas. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I mean, I read, I think, I think I read all the correspondence that, from the lawyer, uh, uh, there wasn't anything about the bank, right? And I read Joe's link, lengthy discourses, a couple of them, was I right?
I did not receive those, but.
I did.
It's not so.
And so, my only concern, and I'm not saying it's not viable, but we're spending money all the time, but it might be money spent well in the long, well, money well spent in the long run.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess, there's a cost of doing business and we can either be proactive or reactive, and I guess this one in particular, I feel fairly confident based on my own judgment and guidance I've been, um, given by professionals on this, that the proper course of action is having professionals engaged here.
So what's gonna happen next if we approve doing this?
Um, it would be primarily Bolton and Mank's hands for investigation and proceeding, but wherever that takes it, um, could include investigating to see if the current outlet is restricted in any form, could be past the analysis to determine what would be needed for an improvement, um, any of the above, but crossing our teams and dotting our i's based on code, I believe is very important here, and that's where I would have both professionals involved.
Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we are up to discussion decision need for culvert. Thanks Marge.
Thank you, Marge.
Have a great day. Okay, let me get to that here. I believe there's, you're, you're hooked up then?
I am hooked up, so I can put it up on the screen, so.
Okay, and, yeah, uh, Mark, you put this on the agenda?
Yeah, yeah.
If, if you'd like to speak to this at all, just come up to the podium, state your name and share with us what, what you're desiring.
Give you, just, we'll be giving you a few more.
Thank you.
And Mark, you tell me what you wanna see on this screen and I'll put it up, so whenever you're ready, just let me know.
No, uh, I, Mark Farrick, West Bend, Iowa, and, uh, I guess, uh, what I'm getting at is, uh, three years ago, basically Mother's Day, we had a big rain that caused quite a bit of damage in my, in my field, and, uh, I, I at that time requested a culvert. It was, it was obvious that, uh, the road was being a dam. The water's about two and a half foot higher than across the other side of the road. And, uh, it's clearly, if you look at, uh, on your first thing here, it's Garfield Eight, it did come out real well here, Garfield Eight, you can see there's like a little eight-inch tile going underneath the road there in the corner, the northwest corner, right here. It's a little, a little eight inch going underneath that road right now. And right now, there's a six inch intake, I think on, on both sides of the road, going into that eight inch county tile. And I have some pictures that probably, yeah, that probably would be the best, I looked at a few of them and then I can do a little bit more explaining, probably.
Sure.
Hit those lights lighter there, will you?
Oh.
Mike, go to the others, put those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
But this one probably, probably paints the biggest picture that you can, you can see, um, obviously on north me, the next field there, there's, there's a natural waterway that comes from the, brings a lot of acres from the north, comes down, and Lots Creek is over here to the east. But there's a, there's also a, there's a two-foot culvert about right here underneath the road that a bunch of water comes into my field, and my field's more like a pond, you can see the road's dammed enough, it, it comes out of the intake here and then runs down to the natural flow and flows over to the, to Lots Creek is what happens. But, but the road's being a dam. And, yeah, maybe go to the next picture. So this, this is a two-foot culvert, you can see here just gushing out. It was about a day and a half, two-foot culvert was bringing two foot of water into my, my farm. Uh, go to the next slide. Yeah, maybe one more, I mean, this is just another ditch, so this, this here is the road, there, there's an intake sort of about right where the eight-inch tile goes underneath the road, about right where you see the water's dammed up there, can't get across. In fact, I don't think you can see the intake, it's sort of. So, where I was going with this is, you know, yeah, I, I asked the county to do something about it three years ago, I've asked again this past year, nothing happened, we tried to resolve some things. I, if you turn the page, I, I actually reached out to James Hudson because I wasn't getting any help from the, the local engineer here. And it clearly states, this is, you guys probably know Jim Hudson, I think he actually represents your county. And he sent me this email, he said, code section three fourteen point seven, says, please note the third to the last line. And he says, it shall be their duty, referring to the county, to use strict diligence in draining the surface water from the public road and its natural channel. The road authority shall not turn the natural drainage or the surface water to the injury of the joining owners. And I actually, on the next page, I actually have the law printed out there and highlighted, and if you go back one sentence before that, it says, nor shall they destroy, injure reasonable ingress or egress to any property or turn the natural drainage of the surface water to the injury of the joining owners, injured, well, injury, I, and I told Doug when I asked him to put the culvert in three years ago, that we received a lot of damages and I'd like it fixed so that I don't have much damage, and this past year, it probably cost me thirty-five thousand dollars, and I told him I'd price him the county a bill for that. I'm probably not gonna do that, but I'm just asking for a culvert to go underneath here. He's, uh, if you turn to the next page, he's tried to, well, actually maybe skip one, but this, this what he's wanting to do is maybe increase the tile underneath the road. It was gonna be eighteen inch, I think I got him talked up to a twenty-four inch tile, and he wants to put a twelve inch intake on both sides, which, I mean, that's gonna be better than what I have, but mind me, the county eight inch is already full of water. And when I talked to Don Etler, because James Hudson said, since, you know, he's sort of, he's representing me, but he represents you, he said, maybe talk to Don Etler, he's well known, he is an engineer. And, uh, well, Etler's thoughts, well, if you're gonna engineer that, if you get a two-foot culvert, you probably need a thirty, a thirty-six inch culvert going underneath the ground, we're only, because now you're picking up fifty acres of my ground too, if he, if he had to do engineering. And he said, if you're gonna put a two-foot tile underneath there, you would need a thirty-six inch intake on top of that twenty-four to fill it, I mean, that's just natural, lets everyone know that you're gonna be inch, one and a half times what your tile is to fill it up using an intake. So he said, he was actually retired and sort of referred me to Tyler, because I said, I, I'd be willing to pay an engineer to get my point across, and Tyler said, well, have you ever gone to the board and presented your case? I said, no. I said, well, he said, why don't you do that first anyways? And so that's why I'm here, I just don't wanna have a bunch of loss in my farm organically, and we always took a big hit. And nowhere in the law it talks about becomes who your landowner is, or, I mean, that changes, the law just, we're not changing, we just don't wanna change the natural course of the water, it wants to go north into that drain and go to Lots Creek and the road's blocked and that, so, I'm just asking permission, and I even told the supervisors, I'd be glad to do it myself, so it doesn't cost the county anything.
If you decide to do it yourself, Mark, why don't you clean all the filler of the ditch going east, put a decent tile under your road that's on the hog site, and you'll get rid of water a lot faster.
No, I think if you go back to that picture, the water wants to go north, it, it clearly states we're not supposed to.
The water can't be, because that, uh, ditch is full of silt.
No, there's, there's a hill there.
Mike, let's, let Mark finish his presentation, then we can have some dialogue.
If, if he took, if he took some elevations, I mean, what Mike's suggesting is that's going up a hill, I mean, you can't get the ditch deep enough to, to take the water that way. That water from the hog house actually comes back toward this intake, I mean, that's, that's the bowl, I mean, if you look at elevation map, I mean, it's clearly can't go through a hill.
Do you want me to show the video, Mark?
Oh, yeah, with me, yeah, I did. Trickling out of this side, out of that thing, needs to be a culvert underneath the road. I mean, the water's about up to the, the side here. And it's, wants to run north into the district.
You wanna see the video I pulled up?
Yeah, it's in our package.
Yeah, yep.
I've, I've looked at it before.
Yeah. That, that first picture that she showed, that, that really, I mean, you can't explain it anymore, I mean, you see what the natural flow is, and you see what the roads, I mean, the law clearly states, the county, just read this again, it is their duty to use strict diligence in draining the surface water from the public road and its natural channel, its natural channel, it wants to go through the road. And it does, it just has to go, it's a public, kind of, it's an intake and bubble up the other end, it goes, it just takes a lot longer to do it. I mean, you, you can see it just runs straight north. And this is a hill here, we built the hog house on a hill, it, it can't go through there.
It's not, it's not that much of a hill.
There is too, I mean, it's probably six foot. And the ditch is already probably five foot deep there. I, I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm just, I just wanna pull, I mean, land's gonna switch, I'm, some of them might own my land, some, I'm just, it's, the law, the act inside of the law, it's, it's not supposed to, and I think there's quite a few places in Kansas County the same way, is what I'm told. I'm just encouraging you guys to, to pull the law, and I'm, I'm just, I'm willing to help you guys out, I mean, what Doug's trying to predict here, and I don't know, I'm surprised he hasn't had it installed, but that's, they were maybe gonna order it last fall and do it last fall, and could've did it this spring, it hasn't been done, I don't know if the parts are ordered, but it's, it hasn't been done, so it just will be done right, and this is gonna be putting a two-foot culvert underneath there, and I'm not asking for one being engineered to be thirty, I just want a twenty-four, and that, that'd be happy, and I don't think the water's gonna go through that culvert very often, just except from, and if it's, if it's not the natural water, no water's gonna go through there anyhow, but it's not gonna cost, I'm willing to even pay for the culvert, if, I'm, it, it cost me thirty-five thousand dollars last year, I, I can't stand that. And, uh, yeah, I'm just willing to do, I have excavators sitting in my yard, so if someone wanted to stop out there, a county man or a foreman, and help me, but I'd save the county excavator. So, I'm just asking for permission to do that, it just needs done, and we need to do it soon. So, I just don't wanna have losses again, or injury like the law says, because I've been, too many times I've had that lately, so, that's why I came here, Tyler told me I should come here before I hire you.
Thanks for your presentation.
So I don't know if I could get an approval or not, or how I'll put that face, yeah.
I've.
You have any questions?
You put a tile that big under the road, it would wash your gully right through my field, oh, yes it would.
Nick, you know how many acres are going through here, and I, you didn't even hardly lose any crop, when water's full, and it doesn't even leak, and it's not even full.
When you put, when you put a twenty-four inch hole.
So that's what, that's what I have over here, Nick.
You put that under the road, you put that under the road, and you're gonna wash my field out.
It doesn't wash, it doesn't wash my field, there's a two-foot here, should I block that one? I think Luden Farms and Foxtons would be upset.
The, the board is gonna, or the board needs to discuss if we wanna do anything different, you know, here, and, um, and understand where you're both coming from there, yeah, um, Doug, correctly for wrong, the parts are, the material is on order currently, is that?
Yeah.
For what, what has previously been decided?
We, we have eighteen inch, we have the material for eighteen inch pipe onsite.
Onsite now.
That, that's what we agreed to last year.
Yeah, I think twenty-four is what's on order, is that?
Yes, after some supervisors came into my office last fall, they requested that that be increased to a twenty-four, so we are in the process right now of communicating. The concrete pipe company was down all winter. We are talking to try and get that created, that may work.
And they don't have an estimated arrival date or?
I would not think it's gonna take very long, but.
No, excuse me, is this going under the road or is it going through?
It would be the tile line, Mike.
It would be down in the tile line.
Correct.
Be replacing what's there and upsizing it.
But, but it clearly is not gonna do, it's not gonna pull the law, it's still, I mean, it's gonna cost the county five times to do that versus if you put the culvert through the road, just like they did on the blacktop. And that's what the law says, and if he wants to put a two-foot culvert, I, I didn't know this, but he really needs to put a thirty-six inch intake on top of that two-foot culvert to fill it, but the problem is he already got an eight-inch tile full, so it probably should be a thirty-inch tile if he wants to do the tile out. And then go with the four-foot intake. But, I'm happy with just a two-foot culvert, and I just, you give me the culvert, I'll put it in, I'll buy the culvert, but it costs the county nothing.
Board of any questions?
But I would like something done within a couple weeks, either way, I mean, I gotta grow and crop today, I'm.
Well, the way it's sounding is we have an eighteen inch on hand and waiting on other material if we're doing something different, um, twenty-four inches ordered, and who knows how long that will be, so as far as a two-week timeline, I don't think anybody can guarantee that.
Is there an objection to putting a culvert from the board? Why won't we put a culvert in?
Because it's too long there.
No, I just want, I'd just like the board to, to, to address that.
There's a lot of those discussions that.
I mean, I read the law, I mean, I don't know, there's a two-foot culvert coming underneath the blacktop, why is that okay? Can we take that out? That would help out, we could just put a six inch or something like that, but I, I don't think they'd be happy.
That was, that was a pretty rain that we had for two years in the road, that's never happened before.
Well, I'm saying, so I'm, so, if I put the culvert in it, it's probably never gonna happen again, so what, why does it bother you?
If I put the culvert, leave the tile, I'm working on it.
This is a, this board discussion here, I mean, yeah, if you have, either we have questions for the board, that's fine, but if you wanna talk outside, that's, that's up to you guys. It, either way, we would be spending more money to, even, even for a culvert, because we already have parts that were ordered for that, I mean, we're still, that's, that's already been paid for.
The county's big, he could use that two-foot anywhere in the county.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure.
I'm just saying, I can save the taxpayer dollars, including Nick, uh, if we just put a culvert in. And if, and if it, it would satisfy me, and it would probably prevent damages like the law says, and then putting a twelve inch, you got a two-foot, that's half the capacity of twelve inch, but you already got an eight-inch in there, so I'm probably gonna get the relative of an eight-inch tile, this is all I'm gonna get, and you got a two-foot, so you got over four times the amount of water coming in, is what, what he's predicting to put in, and that's just not, not acceptable. And I don't believe for a second that, that, that's not culvert he ordered last fall, or he can't pick it up now, I mean.
So you had a discussion about this once before, is that right?
We have, because it was a couple of years ago that, three years ago, a request was put in, so, Mark had gotten hold of me last year, it was after the big rains last spring, and was looking for just something to get done there, and, and so, through the course of last year, myself and, and Doug and, and Kyle was in on some of those discussions as well, and I, it was brought up. I think even a couple of times briefly to the board, um, last year, and through the course of those discussions and sitting down with Doug in his office and going through things, well, Mark met, met with myself and Doug one time as well, and, um, that's where we landed was, and being it was in the right of way, I was deferring some of that to, to Doug, being that's his wheelhouse, but, um, and everything that happens in that, so. We landed on last, the twenty-four inch with twelve-inch intakes, that was the last decision.
And that was when?
That was in November.
Probably in November, and it wasn't my choice, but it was.
Better than what you have.
If I have damages, there's no hesitation, we're putting a culvert in a top of that, but it's, but nothing's been done yet. As I said, we started three years ago, and so the same things happened.
And I'm just, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure why, just from a contractor's standpoint. Is it, is it normal for, for companies to shut down during the winter time and not produce, I, I'm just genuinely curious?
There's not a big demand for concrete, precast concrete pipe during the winter months in North Central Ohio. This is out of hump there, so they regularly lay off.
Okay.
I, I, go ahead. I, I was gonna say, I guess, I can understand during the winter being laid off, but there's been a lot of pipe that's been put in the ground already this spring, so if it was on their radar last year, I, I would be surprised that it's not leaving by now.
We have been visiting with them.
Okay, so, um, what?
Well, Nick, the other thing, I don't know.
Let Amber ask her question first here, what were you gonna ask Amber?
Um, well, I was going to ask then, what would be, Doug, what do you think would be realistic for this to be done? I mean, add for a timeframe, if, if this is, if this twenty-four inch tile and intake is the best way to solve the problem, when do you anticipate this could be done so that he doesn't have any more loss?
I would, I would hope that in the next week or two, we would have the material. And then, if weather allows, we can go in and get it installed.
Do you have an opinion on the culvert? If the culvert was, if a culvert was installed, like what he is asking, what would be, what's your opinion on that versus this, and?
Well, there's a, there's a history at this location, and for the last forty years, um, I think in the mid, mid-eighties, there was a tile that was placed by someone in the road right away without any permission from Cassius County Secondary Owners or Cassius County Supervisors that went east to the drainage ditch. And I do not know the condition of that, I do not know who owns that. It is my opinion, it's not Cassius County's. So there was tile going east, and there's tile going north. The storm that happened a couple of years ago, followed the line that the board is well aware of with Lots Creek, and some of the damage that it did to Lots Creek, it was a storm that does not happen very often. Last year's rains affected a lot of areas, whether, whether they had good drainage or not. I, I came up with a solution that I, I thought one would work, I believe would, will work, and one that, um, keep parties somewhat happy.
Doug, I just will say, I know, and we, and we had all these discussions, but what happened back in the eighties happened back in the eighties, and Mark was not farming that then, I mean, that, that's kind of near here nor there, uh, for today's discussion.
But it's part of the drainage.
Yeah, I asked my dad, they, but Mansky put it in, they, they had permits from Cassius County, it was before Doug's time. That's why he's getting his emotions in this instead of following the law, and that's fine.
What year was it put in?
And that is something, I guess, all parties need to be diligent, this should not be an emotion-based decision.
Right.
This needs to be based on facts, and if, if we need to look at other options harder, I guess maybe we do, but if there's other past situations that need to be addressed, maybe they need to be addressed, but they don't need to be addressed as conditions for this situation. I know the place I farm and the location I live, there's a culvert through the road, it's not in the lowest spot possible. Myself and the neighbor both have intakes, I can say the intakes equalize the water level to some degree prior to it even getting to the culvert, but I do think from a fact-based decision perspective, taking the culvert out of the equation here doesn't really make sense to me when it comes to a neutral standpoint of moving water and following the code. I think the conversations we had were to try to meet some sort of compromise, I'm not saying that, that was wrong, but I don't think that completely follows the direction of the code in the most cost-effective manner. I guess regardless of either owner on either side, I feel this should be a fact-based decision based on where the water goes, or where it should go. I don't know the elevation of the hog site, if we need to come check and confirm that, maybe we do engineering to figure that out, but, um, if there is a tile that goes to the north right in this location, that's a pretty strong indication that natural course of water would be that direction to at least some extent.
I'd be glad to give you an elevation of the ditch.
Uh, that's my perspective to the board.
What's the objection to a culvert?
From Mike, north of Landowner.
I understand that, I, I, I feel like I'm missing something here, uh, I, I, I appreciate, I'm at, I, I feel like I'm missing something, I, I really do, if, if, if nobody thinks the water should surface drain to the east, is that correct?
No, that's not a...
The water was, the water would?
That would be a
Are, are, are they?
Drainage ditch situation to make it go east on us.
Right, and nobody thinks it's supposed to go that way.
No.
Do we think we're overloading the situation by a tile that was put in at one time? Taking water backwards a little bit, or, or, I, it, it, again, I feel like I'm missing something, and I don't, I don't know the history, I don't know the story, but the picture to me, and again, I know it won't make Mike happy, the picture to me looks like the road is stopping the water in this case, unless there's artificial water being dumped that way, that, that wouldn't go that way, I, I feel like I'm missing something.
Well, I mean, it has relied on an intake on the south side of the road and an intake on the north side of the road to equalize for the last, how many years? I, I feel by, one, verifying that the tile under the road is not damaged, and putting in good durable material, concrete pipe, tight concrete pipe with the intakes, we will create a situation and even more effectively allow that water to, to equalize. There also, in order for the water just to run on the surface, it has to, uh, there, the land north in Mike's field is higher, I mean, there's, there's just a low pothole there that until water gets soaked, it flows from pothole to pothole to pothole.
So, that's the part that was missing, the ground is high.
It's not just a waterway.
It's not gonna go directly, if the culvert was put in, it's not gonna go directly out of the culvert to the sink river, or whatever it is.
I mean, it, it would have, all the low spots would have to fill up, fill up before water runs.
So I, I can make one point, just to fill a little history, that eight-inch tile was not near big enough, so I think back in the day, my dad did bring up a main, private main, two pattern tile, and most of that on the north side, when I started farming it, it still wasn't pattern tile enough, so a lot of that split on thirty-foot centers, where you see in all that pond. But it just can't overcome two foot in, from the neighbors, when you get a heavy rain, all that water, so this is just one of those things, it was just gonna help relieve it when you get a big rain, it's not gonna, the culvert, but it would have, the culvert would have helped immensely, even though that ground is just a trickle higher, it would have still pushed the water, I mean, it would, if you take foot and a half of water off of all those acres, that's a lot of water, at least in my town, it worked, but I had, I received a lot of damages, because, yeah, I mean, I say, I, I don't really want, it's just the log, you guys, and you've seen the picture, and it's, it's so clear, and what he's suggesting is just, it's only half of a main, I mean, less than half, the eight-inch tile's already.
Just because it's an eight to a twelve, um, numbers-wise doesn't mean it's only a fifty percent increase, the capacity of each of those is, is different, I, I'm not one to calculate those, but I just want to make that point, it's not just four inches more of tile, it's four inches of tile outside of an eight. I don't know, anyone else on the board, just other thoughts or questions?
I just know the cost of culverts is not that much, and the damages I received is just so significant. I, I just, I'm positive, I mean, I say, we really should be talking about neighbors, but I mean, I had to pay, next camp, whatever damage I could be on his, I'd be way less than mine, it was just, but, uh, it's, I say, really the law is not supposed to factor in the neighbors' name, it's just, simply the road's not supposed to be, it's simple.
Where would that, where would the water go if the road wasn't there?
It would fill up and run north and east over to the whatever, before, before Cassius County was inhabited, it would have filled up, and I don't know what course Lots Creek was at that time, um, Lots Creek has been affected by drainage, but it would have somehow taken a course and run then south, southeast down to wherever.
You could see.
That picture she puts back up, it, it goes straight.
It kind of turns into a raging river there for a couple of days, coming down across the road from you to the west and your farm there, and then through your east farm.
No, no, go back, that comes, do I? Fill faster, my neighbor to the east loses lane again, it's been washed out three times.
Is, is what?
My neighbor to the east loses lane.
His lane?
Yes.
Oh.
That, that's been washed out three times already.
Okay.
So I don't think we should burst the water fast, I want the pressure.
Well, we don't have control over what mother nature's...
It's supposed to be natural, that natural flow is what it's supposed to be.
I guess, yeah, a decision probably should be made, or, um, the decision that's may ask to be best for everyone involved. If that is, is the question.
And that's where we landed last, was what's best for everyone involved, improving the situation, and, and, yeah, we did take into consideration both the landowners' feelings on the subject, uh, and so I...
So are you saying this?
Right or wrong?
So are you saying this is what was come up with this?
That's what's currently designed to go in right now. I, I believe.
But it's definitely
Yeah.
A solution, Don Etler and then James Hudson, all of them said, that's not the right way to go about it. That's, I mean, that's what I, I guess I pre-considered the decision of pulling along, so we're in by those means.
I don't know if it's a... In either option, I don't know if it's a, uh, matter of legal or illegal, uh, as far as that goes, I mean, you're still improving the drainage, but, um, I don't know, I, I don't have a, I guess it may be the clearest answer to that question.
I don't think what's proposed is illegal, the question becomes, is it sufficient when a certain rain event happens? I can't tell the future to say whether we're gonna get a seven-inch rain in that location again in a twenty-four hour period or not, but if it happens, our responsibility is to not have the road act up again.
Are you talking culvert, or are you talking to this?
Either way.
Sufficient, or are you talking to either one?
Yeah, the, the question is whether this is sufficient or something else, and, and I don't know either way, depends on, depends on the rain, depends on a lot of variables. If it's a one-inch rain that comes each day for the entire month, this would probably be sufficient. If it's five inches of rain in a twenty-four hour period, this is probably not gonna be sufficient, in my opinion.
And, and to be honest, that's why I'm coming here, because that's what cost me thirty thousand dollars last year, and that's, I mean, you got a two-foot culvert coming into my ground from the other neighbor to the east. I just want that two-foot of water to be able to have two-foot outlet to go back out of my, you know, the natural flow, like the law says, underneath my road, and like Don Etler said, if he actually engineered it, I should be a thirty-inch culvert there. I'm not asking for that, I, I don't really want a, a two-foot, I think, or pattern tile good enough, it should handle five inches without damage if we put a two-foot culvert. I have a feeling what Doug's proposing is pretty common sense, it's just, it's under that, if, if we get this rain, we're gonna have damages again, and the law says that the road should not cause damage.
We agreed to what we had.
No, I, I really didn't.
Now you changed your mind.
I really didn't, I agreed to it, I mean, I said, we, I, I, it's better than I had, but it's, but when they dinked around and then get it done, Nick, it's like, let's just do it right the first time, and when I asked a few attorneys, and then went to a couple, I would say, very, uh, well-known engineers, they both said, this is something, I mean, it's a culvert, I mean, you don't, no, no other county, Colorado, no, no one does this, they have a name for it, push water down underneath, come back up, plus it costs the county five times X to do it, it's just, it's, I shouldn't say, I said it once, and I, I got, yeah, hold my tongue, yeah, it's not the right way to do it. And I just hope that, yeah, the supervisors, Cassius County, will pull the law. Thank you, but I appreciate hearing back from somewhere, to the air tomorrow.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, I wish I was gonna get a vote, but I guess if you guys don't wanna vote, or as a supervisor, I thought maybe that's what we have, that...
It's, it's on the agenda, it can be acted on, um, but I think we, we probably can continue to have some discussion amongst the board here and have action.
Yep, thank you.
I'll be in touch, Mark.
Well, the biggest question raised is whether or not it's gonna affect the, you know, the landowner across the road. Do you truly feel that it will, if you put in a culvert? If you do it, the culvert or ground, that it will affect, it will affect him, is it could possibly drive him out of the front?
Well, I don't think it, it is going to, I mean, it would just be an equalizing pipe. I do not necessarily agree with the statement about causing so much erosion up there. But it, it's just, it's a place that, and we, and we have situations throughout Crestwood County for the roads where we have intakes. That was a solution. Put an intake on both sides and allow it to equalize that way.
Cause Mark's field is here and Mick's field is here, and the water's gotta get here, and then it will go under, or go across. I mean, you know, if should there, was there a culvert? So, I mean, it's gotta come up a little bit in order to get across in the first place, as it is a low spot, but.
Yeah.
So, it's not necessarily gonna stop him from having damages, just going through. He's just wanting further, well, once it does get that high, he wants it to have a place to go. That's, that's what, that's what Mark is after.
And, and I think, to some degree, the, the question of what's the damage to the adjoining or adjacent landowner gonna be, I think, from a common sense perspective, it makes sense, but the code specifically says, where shall they destroy or injure reasonable ingress regress to any property, or turn the natural drainage of the surface water to the injury of adjoining owners? So, it says we should allow for natural drainage, we shouldn't affect it so that it damages others. I, I think the pictures are pretty clear proof that it, it did in this situation, whether it's the freak nature of the storm, or whether it's poor condition of the tile potentially, whatever, the capacity was not sufficient enough to equalize the water at the time of that event.
And I do know that there was an object in the tile that was removed, that was found, I think it was a rock.
At this location?
At this location. So, that, that may have affected things, I don't know.
Potentially, but probably not substantially. Yeah? Any thoughts? I guess for the sake of not sitting here all day, I.
Yep.
I would make a motion that we install a twenty-four-inch culvert at this location to allow for surface water drainage.
So, twenty-inch, twenty-four-inch culvert?
Culvert.
Okay.
I don't.
Okay, it's at this location to allow, so.
Allow surface drainage.
Okay. It's gonna be closer to eleven by the time.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, come back to you.
What can I always work against?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. You got that, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Stacker. And need a second for discussion?
I feel like I'm a hypocrite if I second it, then vote no, in the end, I, 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 uh.
I'll say it for discussion.
There you go. I still feel like, and it, it's very possible everything's not being said because of the recording and everything's going on and everything. I still think there's something that I don't understand, or, or don't, or don't, I'm not getting informed on. So, I, I'm, I'm gonna vote no. If we vote on this today, I'm gonna vote no, and, and ask questions, or go look at it, or whatever, but that's where I'm at.
And if it's all four, I mean, I'll, I'll go out with anybody too, we can look at it too.
Okay. And I'm not, I'm not trying to throw a motion on the table just to get it on over with. If we wanted to readdress this next week and ask more questions and answer things, I don't have an issue with that either. I just, I think this would solve the problem. Maybe one of the biggest things that hasn't been said in the full capacity, maybe, would be the personal tensions between neighbors or adj- adjoining landowners. I, I don't know if that can, should, need to be discussed at this point, but there, there definitely has been some history there.
For, for what it's, excuse me?
No, it's okay. You can vote.
For what it's worth, I don't know. Was this gonna help anything? I had a spot last year where water flowed from the neighbor. I didn't think it would flow through me and get, I thought it would pond. Well, it did, it didn't pond enough, it did flow, and it probably, probably adjusted the channel lower, and so it, it won't get as deep in the future. And, and that's probably what Nick's afraid of. I, I don't know what's right. I, 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 I know I couldn't have thrown, I don't know what's right. I couldn't have thrown a dam up to my neighbor so that that didn't happen last year. I, I, I do know that, so I, again, there's something that I don't, I don't feel like I'm seeing all the information. So, I, if we vote on it today, I will vote no, but bring it back next week, and I don't know if that's gonna make Mark happy, but.
I just think what, I, I just think we have to do what's best. I, I, it looks like there was some time and effort put into this last year as far as this fix. Whatever fix it is, I think it just needs to be handled, and, and probably, pardon me, but also I'm kind of a little bit newer to the drainage side of things, is would it be just kind of a temporary thing? Will there be further problems that are caused by just throwing in a culvert? Maybe this is more of a permanent fix that satisfies both sides of the road a little bit better. That's where I'm a little bit hesitant to just say today was the best thing. A lot of information was given, and it was good information. I do feel like it would probably be beneficial for us, or some of us, or a couple of us to go out and take a look at it. I, I think of, an actual visual onsite sometimes is a lot, well, it's helpful for me anyway. It really helps me look at things a little bit differently, but I'm, I'm just, for a fix that's going to take care of it in a more permanent way, not maybe a quick fix way. I don't know, I'm looking right now at the culvert as a quick fix sort of way. And maybe I'm not looking at that correctly, but that's where I'm thinking at this moment. And so I don't know if it's necessarily the right thing to decide today.
Yeah, I, I think the, I, I can see how, where you got that, Amber, too. And I mean, as far as quick fix, I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily for a quick fix. I think Mark is looking at it as a long-term fix.
Yeah.
I, you know, I, I suppose it depends what side of the conversation you're on there, but it's just two different approaches to how to solve the issue, really is.
Correct.
Yeah. But, anyway, I didn't mean to cut into anybody there.
Oh, no, you're fine. Nope.
I got a couple of things I wanna ask. So, it's, Nick, right? The other landowner?
Mike Bonstetter.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so if his land is a little bit higher in elevation than Mark's, wouldn't that make it so the water flowed down to Mark's if it went through the culvert?
So, and I don't know if Doug wants to address this or not, but one of the things that Tyler didn't hone in on the details per se, but like, when he showed the LiDAR elevations, they look at the whole drainage area as a big picture, but then within there, those models can say, if you eventually get whatever amount of water it is, if, if the rain turns on and it never stops, these are where the paths of least resistance are gonna be. So, whether it's my farm, or these farms that we're talking about, or any other farm, eventually you're gonna fill up your pond, and then it's gonna go somewhere. So, the, the point would probably be to answer your question is, yes, it might need a certain amount of water, but eventually, when that pond's filled up, where's it gonna go from there? And, and Mark's point is, if the water was equalized on both sides of the road, it would fill up the pond across the road, and then it would run from there and get down to that drainage channel. So, yes, it may need to go up to some degree, but eventually, when that threshold was reached, that it was filled up, it would go from there to the north. And maybe we could have Tyler run LiDAR model showing us that, and showing what that entails. I don't know. But I guess my knowledge of the situation, especially because of multiple conversations about it prior to today, the, the need for equalizing through the road, I think is fairly easy to digest. How that happens, whether it's intakes or culvert, could be either way. Capacity of each of those is a quality that, or a piece of the puzzle we've obviously talked about. But at the end of the day, if those, if the road was not there, eventually, that pond on the north side would fill up, and then it would continue on, is best to my knowledge. So, my perspective is, and, and the motion, like I said, wasn't just to throw something on the table and try and slam home a vote. I just didn't wanna sit here in silence for fifteen minutes, to be quite honest. But the purpose of the culvert, it would be quicker and cheaper, yes, but it would be a long-term solution, because we have hundreds if not thousands of culverts across this county, all over our roads. So, I don't think it would be a temporary mandate on a solution, but it would only actually function in cases where there was a major rain event that caused significant water flow. So, I don't know if I hit all points there or not, but I tried to.
Any other questions, Joe?
If we put the culvert in and start creating damage to property on the other side of the road, my question goes back to the code. I mean, I know we'll be moving it back to more of a natural flow for the water, but if it starts creating damage to his property, I mean, would that fall under the same code?
Believe. Well, I, I was gonna say, I believe when you're, it's for if you're altering the natural flow of water, and that alteration causes harm or injury to someone else, I think that's what they're after, the code, not necessarily. If, if you return the, the natural flow of water, does that, does the code protect that person as well? I don't, I don't know that it does. I, maybe, I, I don't know.
Well, I, well, I, I guess my comment to that is, it seems like this solution here was supposed to kinda help with both landowners.
Right, right.
Is where I'm looking at that, is I think it, because I think Doug said that, because of the adjacent landlord. You know, I, I do feel like that's, that's why this plan was put into.
Oh, no doubt.
Place, so.
That's why, you know, conversation we had.
Yeah, and so if, if this is something, I do want Mark to give, you know, a remedy to this, and hopefully, it can be soon. Like I said, I, I kinda would vote no to the culvert today as well, because I think this was put, this was put in place to help with both, both landowners. So, then maybe both landowners are gonna get that satisfaction of feeling like due diligence was made, but. I, I just hope it would get done pretty soon, if possible, is, it sounds like that's what's...
Man.
The.
Sorry, we're still here, man.
Yeah, and the following to that, and, I mean, Carter and Doug and I are aware of this from the conversation, but the conversation was also geared to the aspect of, if this is not sufficient, a culvert will be discussed, requested, added at a later time as well. So, this is an attempt to kind of meet in the middle, but in my blunt, honest opinion, do I feel it's completely sufficient to give me that sleep-well-at-night feeling when a big rain comes, that this would be sufficient? No. So, we don't know how it would, I mean, it, it all depends on what si- what storm system actually comes, on whether it would be sufficient or not.
When we talk about whether or not it would be sufficient, if, if there's question, is there any question? It could possibly not be sufficient, okay, don't shoot me for asking this question, but why wouldn't you put a culvert in at the same time? Like, to try and, I, is that a dumb question?
You're saying.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
And that, that would be an option to do both. But the expense of this option is much more than just simply putting a culvert in, which...
Right, but if we're talking that that might not be the fix, that it means, if we're talking, if it's, if we're talking about it might need a culvert, well, then the culvert's not gonna do what this would do either, so we're kinda talking about both anyway. So, I don't know. I, why wouldn't you do?
The culvert, the culvert would equalize it between sides, which is the point of a larger tile here and intakes on both sides, is to allow it to equalize. So, they would accomplish the same goal. It would just be a different method of transporting, of going down, over, and up versus straight across.
The culvert would get rid of the water faster, theoretically, you know, in, in the event of a big rain.
De- depends. I mean, size and there'd be factors to that.
No.
No.
However, culvert going from one side of the road to the other without having an intake on the other side, you could be putting water out to the other side of the road, but now it has nowhere else to go, except for back through the culvert.
There's already intakes on both sides.
There are intakes on both sides.
Intakes on both sides, so we're, we're not eliminating the intakes like in a culvert. It would be additional to the current.
So, in the, in the sec-, excuse me, in the second picture, I believe it's showing fair side of the road where the intake is, is water bubbling out of that intake, or is that water going into that intake there? I'm not sure which number picture it is.
Oh, that's, that's coming into Mark's field from the west.
No, I, I think you're looking east there.
Well, but the water's coming from the west, is what I'm seeing. It's blowing east.
Okay, that, so that, that's the north, that's the black, Doug?
That's the black, Doug.
That's the, that's the two-foot culvert that he's talking about, pushing water into his property.
Okay. The hog buildings on the north side of the street there, yeah.
So, that's, that's what he's saying, is that culvert allows surface water into his property, and on the other northern end, there's not an outlet for it to escape. And, yeah, so then, then the road acts like a dam, because it doesn't have the capacity to get through there. So, if you've got a twenty-four-inch culvert there, is that, that's a twenty-four-inch box culvert, isn't it, Doug?
No.
Just a.
Twenty-four inch round.
Sort of feel like.
Mm-hmm. It's rich, okay.
So, if it was matched with a twenty-four-inch culvert on the other side, those two capacities would match. those two capacities would match surface-wise and then could equalize.
Doug, from an engineering standpoint, um it, is there a reason for the twelve-inch intake versus going bigger on the intake?
Well, depends on, that depends a lot on what you are actually trying to achieve. If you have a stormwater system, for example, and you have streets that are draining into a stormwater system, you talk about a outlet that will allow that water from the street to go into the culvert. Typically, it is larger than what, what the pipe or the drain is there. We're talking about a field and a field tile situation. We're talking about equalization, allowing the water to, to convey to each side. In my opinion, that that is adequate. So when they start talking about dropping water into a tile, they're talking about keeping that water in the tile. You gotta large enough drains structured to keep it on there. I mean, there's, there's times where in the city of Algonquin, manholes get blown off. In other cities where water, a storm comes through and so much water is entered into, entered into a, a s- street sewer, stormwater runoff, that that head pops manholes on. We're not talking, I'm not seeing that we're gonna be producing anything like that. We're just gonna have water reequalizing. And the timing of it all, you can take photographs of of flash floods prior to that, the timing of a lot of these with photographs and all can show situations, but you gotta know timing for everything to equalize in a system, in a hydraulic system.
Well, and and this was right after the, that big rain and I mean that, there was ponds in everybody's field. So it, it wasn't like Mark is the only guy that, that had lost.
No, but.
And that's not really what's in question.
No, and it is not, but if you have a twenty-four inch culvert coming in from one direction and a eight-inch intake that's there currently, there shouldn't be much of a doubt in anyone's mind. The capacity is not even close to handle that. And I don't know what it would even be able to handle without the twenty-four inch culvert bringing water into the field. But that's where a twenty-four inch culvert going out to allow things to equalize would be pretty simple to correlate across the sides and see the justification that that could move the water wherever it needed to go, to the lowest possible place.
If and when you put a culvert in, I don't know why this matters, I don't know why I'm asking for sure, do you put it in the bottom of the road ditch or do you put it level with the jointing land?
That's a very good question. Because no matter what, people aren't satisfied. If you put it, if you put it in the bottom of the road ditch and the water's gotta get, I'm, I'm gonna exaggerate, the water's gotta get thirty inches deep in order to finally get over a ridge, isn't doing anything. Or do you put it in a situation where the bottom, usually the bottom of a road ditch is lower than the adjacent fields?
I agree with that, yeah.
So do you put that culvert at that elevation of the adjacent fields?
That was, that, that was my question.
Right, so.
And let the, let the tiles there, the intakes take care of what's in the bottom of the road ditch. I, I uh.
So it, it, you, it's a matter of opinion. But hydraulically speaking, and I've had situations where people want thirty-inch, thirty-six inch culverts, sometimes the water only gets eighteen inches deep.
Somewhere in all, excuse me, somewhere in all this discussion, somebody said or presented or wrote it down that the water was so much higher on one side of the road than the other side of the road, is that in dispute?
I've been down there and I, I have shot elevations on both sides, but I've seen where it has equalized.
I'm sure it does, over time it equalizes, but is there a time, I, ten minutes?
Yes, there would be a time where it takes time to equalize, where that would.
It always starts off higher on the south side.
That's, that's just the same thing on the pavement, there, there's only, you know, there's only, it only allows water.
There's, there's time for the twenty-four inch going out of the pavement, it doesn't have to be.
Right.
Which tells you how much water's flowing through that too.
Yeah, and if that's not adequate, then the other side is gonna really.
You cannot, you cannot design structures to take every storm available. You've got to design for a storm. I mean, if we had to, if we had to design a, a bridge over, over the east fork of the Des Moines River that would not back up any water, that bridge would be so long that it, it would not be, would not be able to afford. So for example, on a river bridge, we, we back water up three quarters of foot, that's what our design is.
So literally a wa- so hypothetically, the, the, the bridge, McGregor Road Bridge over the river, at times, you're saying the water is deeper on the north side of the bridge than it is on the south side of the bridge?
Absolutely, yeah.
Really? Is, is there, is there room to put a coin, is there room to do it?
As long as your, your flow line of it is reasonable with this system, that would be awesome.
So question, then, I'm just thinking out loud here. The tile, the exi- should a, should a culvert be put in? Existing tile would remain with the intakes, I would assume. But.
I would not, I'll be honest with you, that tile needs to be replaced under the road.
I think it's got some issues anyway.
And this is a situation, in practice, we try not to place culverts directly over tile lines because if there is a problem with tile line or if there, then you do not necessarily have, have that, that culvert.
Correct, yeah.
That, that needs to be replaced.
Sure, but I guess to finish what I was going with there, if there was a culvert in addition to that, and that's getting the bottom of the ditch, the culvert, then, then you are talking about how, how far up you place it and, and is it, is it there for just when it rains five inches in two hours? You know, I mean, this, um, and so otherwise, nothing ever flows through. I shouldn't say nothing, but.
It doesn't get used.
Minimally, hardly ever gets used. If the tile is functioning as it should. And that's, that's the other part of the problem is I know, and I've even talked to Mike about this, I mean, that, I don't think that tile has functioned even as it should, um, you know, always in the past either. So there might be two different issues there too.
Doug, what kind of, what size materials do we have on hand or on site for this to go under the road? Is it eighteen?
Eighteen inch reinforced concrete pipe.
And twelve-inch intakes or?
I believe that's what it was.
Okay. Would it be possible to do that plus a culvert and maybe whether the culvert's at the field level or split the difference between the field level and the bottom of the ditch, have the tile, the new tile system set up to be the primary and culvert could be secondary or backup only in.
Sure.
The situations that it applied? I think, I think that would be a great option. It would, it would put the tile as the primary and cover the basis both directions maybe.
So this, this drawing where it says twenty-four, where'd that come, I know it's not yours, but did he, did he do that?
It was, it was just an upsize from the eighteen that we talked about before.
That's not what you guys agreed to last year or whatever?
This is a sketch that Mark drew, we have a similar.
But yours is eighteen?
Well, we got an eighteen and we have a twenty-four.
It originally started out as eighteen, we upsized it to a twenty-four is where we last left it. But we have an eighteen on hand is what Kyle's point is, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
And those materials were already ordered for it, so we have the eighteen. It's just, the twenty-four was what was in question on why that's not here yet, yeah.
I guess if that would be agreeable to everyone, I'd fully support that as well. If we replace the tile with the materials we have on hand as first priority and then install culvert secondary to that, what kind of spacing do you typically try to avoid the tile with if you had a situation like this? Like fifty feet, hundred feet or depends on the area?
Looks a little bit as a depth of the tile, if I remember right, I think that is about four foot below what the road ditch is, so somewhere twenty-five to thirty feet would be adequate.
Okay. I'd, I'd be supportive of that.
Yeah, and we still have a motion second on the floor, so.
And I, we can amend that.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm getting at it, just in case people forgot.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I, I would, I would amend Kyle's motion, um, well, to that effect, but it's, so it'd be installing in.
If it's a friendly amendment, we can agree by consensus if it's a motion or the person who makes the motion agrees. So yeah, I, I'd be fine with that. If we add on installing the current materials that are on hand of twelve-inch intakes and an eighteen inch tile through the road in addition to a twenty-four inch culvert. I'd be good with that.
And, and that culvert would be.
Offset.
Ah, right.
I don't know, I'm gonna say this because we're talking about amendments. Sometimes I think the amendments, it gets tricky to figure out what we're actually doing. Can we just vote on the culvert, just doing the culvert and hey, if it dies, then, then, then make a motion to what we actually really want to do? These amendments get very confusing.
No, I don't disagree.
I agree.
They get really confusing and, I mean, we're gonna do the same thing, but I think it's just gonna be a little clearer.
I'll just, I'll just resend my original one and make a new one then, so.
Okay, do you have to take back your?
Resend my friendly amendment, I, I mean, if you rescind the motion, there's no friendly amendment, so.
Then we'll use this as a new main motion.
Resend, so I'll be, I'm just gonna put, I'll resend motion. I'll resend. Amendment, okay.
Then just use, use the amended or the friendly amendment language as the new motion then?
No, just do it, new motion.
Right, I'm saying that's gonna be the new.
The same language.
Same language is what I'm saying, what you wrote down.
Well, just, just let her start over, I've been in that chair before, this is gonna be easy.
Okay.
Okay, so the new motion is to install current, or.
Current supplies on hand of.
Current, yeah, supplies, that's the word I forgot, supplies of twelve-inch intakes and eighteen-inch tile
Yep.
through the road.
Yep.
And in addition, a twenty-four inch culvert.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's your new motion?
Yes.
Kyle made it.
Yes. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, and that, and, and that will be offset from the tile, the culvert will be, and it will be a secondary. Means, I'm not saying that's in the motion, I'm just clarifying that for the board.
Yeah, I mean.
That's not in the motion.
Doug and the secondary road department can orchestrate the details as they get to it.
Correct, so. Go ahead, Howard.
So Doug, are you gonna, are you gonna be, if not happy, are you gonna be satisfied with this?
I, if you guys, if that's what you want, I don't know, we'll make that work.
And without putting it in the motion, at what level will you put this culvert in? Toward the, toward the level of the natural low spot of the ground, even if.
I need, I need to look at, on the outlet side and on the inlet side, what the difference in elevations are and, um, I need to determine that out.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Okay, well, no further discussion, we've talked about this.
You will call Mark and explain.
I'll, I'll call Mark and let him know what the board is up to.
That'd be good.
Yep, yep, I'll do that. Uh, okay, uh, roll call vote please.
Has.
You sure you know how to start somewhere else?
You, you can ask for a, for a reverse, you wanna reverse?
He, he voted it.
Howard, you're voting yes or?
I voted yeah.
Okay, okay.
He voted first.
You guys like confusing me, I think. Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
A Wackter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all eyes. And yeah, thanks Doug for being up.
You're welcome, yeah, nice.
Thank you.
All right, and if.
We need a break.
Yeah, we need a break.
Five minutes, ten minutes.
Five minutes.
Ten minutes, ten minute break.
You're really strict on your five minutes.
Ten minute break.
Well, he does say five and we're usually back after seven, so.
High goals. We could criticize the follow through. Do you got all your notes for the paper on that one?
What? Yeah, yeah, no, I was listening, I was interested.
Where, what road is this they're talking about?
Fifty, Hundred and Fiftieth Street and Twenty Avenue. Be the corner, southeast corner of Hundred and Fiftieth Street and Twenty Avenue.
Oh, it's Mark's here, right?
Yep.
So what the worst is, in case you're a man or partner, well, fight it. Down each.
I didn't expect that conversation to be done in two minutes, but that took a while. You wanna get out of here in a hurry?
I do, I do. This is, I think I can, I think I'm working, we're, I don't think we worked right now, I think I could be planting right now if uh.
Yeah, we didn't get all the rain that we were?
We certainly did not, I, forty-eight, let's see, forty-eight hours ago, even thirty-six hours ago, I thought this, I would, I'd have nowhere to be, I'd have nothing but time.
I know, I know mine's not dry, so I'm not quite as panic mode.
Yeah, how, how did you guys fare up north?
I forgot to look to see how much I got, but.
You didn't need to get much to be, if I'd have got, if I'd have got a tenth last night, I'd be relaxed right now, but I got ten drops.
As I say, up north, you guys got hammered quite a bit, we're?
I've, I've gotten hit about every time they've talked about it, and then even a couple times when they did.
But you guys were better off earlier, right, than we were?
Hmm, maybe a little, but I don't think a whole lot like us. I definitely saw the equipment down here the same time I saw it up.
Two weeks ago on Monday, people had started three or four days earlier planting and I went out on Monday and wasn't able to get there. So then we planted on Thursday that week, which would be twelve days ago now, yeah, twelve days ago. And I didn't plant again until this past Sunday.
And I don't remember what day it was last week, but there was a day, there were planters running in the bird, big six area, running hard, it was like everybody in that area was going. And when I got home, there was still water standing in the yard from the rain the night before and like, not that it was a huge one, but it was probably half inch or better and you, you just, there's no way you would've touched anything in that area. But five miles away, it was gone dry and it was run, run good.
Sunday, I ran right on highway eighteen there and finished, I had an hour to finish yesterday morning and and I, I just got in the tractor and went two miles north and pulled into the field and did a U-turn and went back on, because it just wasn't right. But I was describing the situation where um now I think I described it accurately, the water ran where I never thought water would've ran last year. Because it got deep enough that, and I'm sure the channel, the out, where, I'm sure it lowered that channel by four or six inches, you know, but uh.
Well, and the reality is, whether any lights are not, the one in a hundred year storms have happened a couple times in the last couple of years, so it's not, I don't know if our normals are quite in the normal range as much as they used to be.
Who's on the wellness committee for the board?
Or did that change to anger?
You gotta look at the signs.
Yeah.
I'll be the quickest way.
I got the PDF on my desktop here. I am.
I'm not.
Okay, um, is the opening moment eight seconds? Yes, here's the deal. Opening moment for?
So we had tornado warnings.
You didn't know we like tornado? Josh, where were you?
I was outside staring at the flowers.
I didn't know we had a tornado warning on this side.
I mean, because too, not outgoing, but.
I knew about Drake's that was moving into some towards Way City, but I didn't hear about?
Can I not be notified?
And McCord?
Wanna make changes, you can.
I didn't hear about McCord either.
And Way City? You know, I can, I can.
I mean, because I, I saw there'd be a ton of people that are suddenly, if they don't want to or do want to.
No, they'll, even, even bring in one person, they have to tell them that they can't, because they're definitely just done.
Just the afternoon.
That's what I'm saying, if it don't be, or if they share bad enough.
But you're still gonna have those people that say, why would we?
I know, I know.
It was, it was, this was.
I don't know, yeah, an interior, I don't know.
The rain was unbelievable.
We had a power line, or a power.
Cause we're not meeting in a month.
Yes, that must've been the one that I saw, on somebody posted it on Facebook.
Yep.
I think we're close to meeting. There was neighbors.
Just we could even move it up a couple weeks, so it would be in time.
You have a private drive, you can't see it, there's been a dead tree, I have forty or fifty foot dead tree there for years, years. And it, it fell mostly to the north because of the wind.
Okay.
They had to move it off of their private drive a little bit, but it had fallen to the east, northeast is of the way it fell, it would've been a bigger problem for it.
Perfect, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, we got a secondary road budget program too, that's an hour.
Oh, well, let's, let's get, let's get through the rest of these here then. Oh, I don't know, this next one's pretty controversial, we might be talking about it for a while.
Yeah. You got some explaining to do now.
Yep, yep.
Sure, I do.
I wanna, I wanna know every item.
I was related.
You got a packet full of information about three ring binder need?
Okay.
No.
Telling us how important these projects are.
Okay.
No, I can just tell you.
Sammy's back, so, Sammy's back, so let's roll and maybe we'll get through the meeting today, alright.
Alright.
Okay, discussion decision, approve Supervisor Garmin signing letter of support for community services block grant as representative of the North Iowa Community Action Organization, you mentioned this last week and?
I did, um, I, and I also did talk with um, Sis Greymon, because I know her and I asked how they handled it. They handled it in a way where she brought it up during discussion and says I represent Kasuth County or Hancock County for this and um, I feel I need to sign it, I'm gonna sign it, so um, and her board agreed. I did reach out and I just asked, you know, um, Cindy, what are these dollars used for? They're used to hire client resource staff, um, and they do have a member housing in Kasuth County, one to two days a week or by phone the remainder of the week to assist individuals in assessing resources. Um, it says the client resource staff assists individuals in completing applications for heating assistance, rent assistance, disaster assistance, embrace, embrace, to name a few. Um, they're very versed in the resources available and uh, they have assisted three hundred and seventy-seven individuals in Kasuth County this year as to date. So, you know, they are using those resources to help people here, um, so I'd like to, you know, have Kasuth County, you know, buy, buy in support of continuing that grant, but not sure it's gonna happen, but.
Is that your motion?
Well, sure, I would make a motion to that if I.
Alright. Anybody wanna second it? Seconding my stacker to approve Amber to sign the letter of support? Any further discussion?
You know, not to vote no to something I seconded, but I thought we asked for a lot of documentation last week.
You got it, I just told you what it went for.
Just added to lighten the mood after the phone.
She did, she just told you.
Yep, yep, yep. Vote no if you want, alright, uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Hearing no nays, motion carries unanimous. Okay. Alright, on to the third reading for, thanks Amber.
Yes, thank you.
Third reading for the proposed Kasuth County Animal Control Ordinance that addresses animal control within the rural areas of Kasuth County.
You ready to read fast?
So, I gotta read this again here, third time, final time.
I think, well, I thought if there was public here, you had to, but if there was not, you didn't have to, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I don't think you have to read it again, but.
I had to read it the second time because we changed languages.
I know we can waive the second and third, but we did change the language between the first and second, so I don't know.
It's up to you.
I think if you didn't change anything, you can, you can also just waive the third, uh, but I've?
It's up to you, just what I agree that you.
Should, should I?
Here's the paper one if you want that.
Should I read it?
Otherwise, I'm fine with waiving it, since no one's here, I don't care.
Nobody's here, we've read it twice.
I'll make a motion to waive the third reading.
Okay, motion by stacker to waive the third reading. Any second to that, second by Haze? Any discussion on waiving the third reading of the animal control ordinance? If not, or roll call vote please.
Haze?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wactor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Okay, third reading is, is done, waived?
Hmm?
Any motion to approve?
And we need a motion, what's that?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Yeah, motion to approve the, motion to approve the ordinance, is that on the?
Yeah, the motion is to approve third and final reading.
Okay, it's not on my tab here, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's the reading, there's the final.
Okay, yep, alright, motion to approve the third and final reading of proposed animal control ordinances that addresses animal control within the rural areas of Kasuth County. So, need a motion to that effect?
So.
Motion by Wactor, second by Garmin, any discussion?
Just had a phone call this morning, um, menited you to, I mean, uh, minutes before we're on the way here. A person was concerned his dog had to be tied up, he had a dog, he was sitting duck for our coyote and I told him, no, he did not have to be tied up, he just wasn't supposed to wander the county.
Uh huh, yeah, uh huh.
It's more of an.
Yep, yep.
And, and it's more for repeat offenders, this is not, yeah, I mean, there's a couple.
Just, just to have a call.
Yep, no, good point.
Are they calls?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, uh, roll call vote please.
Haze?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wactor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous and ordinance is passed.
Okay, and I believe it gets published again now.
Okay, yep.
So.
Very good.
And then would you sign it, please?
Need to sign these two?
Yes.
Okay. Do we only do some of this?
Yes.
We gotta sign down here too.
Uh huh.
You guys gotta sign and glue in one of these days.
I think there's one.
There.
Is that blue?
My blue pen died.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anything else, or you guys?
I was just waiting, nope, that's all, that's all. Okay, got them signed. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we are up to discussion decision, appoint new members to the eminent domain commission and certify the updated list to the chief judge.
Okay, so I was able to find two people willing to be on the commission and?
Great.
Um, to serve on May fifteenth, um, if needed, and those two people are at the bottom of your list, um, but I think I put it in your, did I put it in your board folder?
It's in the folder, it's in the folder, yeah.
Yes, okay, um, so those two uh, new people are Ken Clark and Brad Frieders. Um, and so I'm asking if you could um, approve those, so we can update the list and then send the list to the judge and the Department of Transportation is contacting the judge also, um, so he can do a new order to the sheriff's office for the hearing.
So do they replace?
So, it was a bunch of different people, so off the list is Mark Klein, he no longer has a license. Leland Metzger has moved out of the county, John Cowan has moved out of the county. Uh, yeah, Dwayne Habaker is, is passed, he, that's a different category, but I did take him off and then Andre Torkelson um, passed away in twenty twenty-one, so.
I thought we went through it a couple times.
Yeah, we did, but you know, it's, if they move out of the county or don't renew their license, you, you're not gonna know.
Well, like, like the Elmore farmer, I mean, if none of us know who that is.
Yeah, we're not gonna know, so, so that's who is off the list now and um, we are gonna have to update the list again, but the lady from the DOT said not to worry about that right now, just get two people on so they can get through the hearing date, so.
What do we keep for contact info for these peoples, is it phone number, email?
So we just have addresses, that's how we have to um, submit to the judge, but the list that she sent me um, with the realtors, the list that I could call had phone numbers on them, but I, we don't have to call these people except for when they first get on the list, that's the sheriff's office job, so we don't usually, aren't given that information.
That may be something to see if we can keep that in the record, so we can double check and make sure everyone's still able to serve that, that's a better, but I don't know, not, not affecting today.
Well, or maybe even check the list to say the deceased list and I orders or something, just to see if, you know, there is anybody that maybe we missed that's deceased.
Yeah.
Because like I said, some of these people, you know, you just might not even know who they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that would cover deceased, but if we got someone who has license or moved out of the area, um, that wouldn't show there.
Okay, well, need a motion to appoint those two new members.
I'll make that.
Two hands raised, so motion by Garmin, second by Haze? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Thanks for hitting those, Tammy.
Uh huh.
Uh, discussion decision to appoint Dr. Allison Roush as deputy medical examiner and Brian Spry as medical examiner investigator effective April first, twenty twenty-five. Oh, yeah, and I, I lost track where we're at and I was gonna let them know too.
Hey, this is Josh up in the boardroom, uh, we're gonna be coming up on the DOT stuff here in just a few minutes. Alright, thanks.
Hey Phil, we are ready for you whenever you wanna come. Okay, sounds good. Yep. He's coming now.
I wonder if y'all travel time here or else, huh?
Yeah, he probably will. Well, we might.
So you were asking about the medical examiner that involved Phil?
Yeah, it does, yep, yep. Allison Roush is, she's a surgeon out at the hospital.
She's a surgeon?
She took Dr. Condoleen's spot when he left you. Yep. I'm pretty sure. Pretty sure she is.
I have no idea.
I grew up with Allison, played for wedding.
I'll take your word for it.
Is Roush her married name or maiden?
Yeah, she married a guy from Olton, South Dakota.
So what's her maiden name?
Tilchus, Kelly and Patty.
Oh, sure.
They're one of their twin daughters.
Do you wanna do discussion with the auditor and board discussion while we're waiting?
Yeah, we could do that. We could. At least, at least get something out of it. Do you wanna go ahead with auditor discussion?
Okay, so I just need to know from Amber and Howard if you're gonna be attending the intern breakfast?
That's right. And what, can you tell me when that is?
Yeah, May twenty-eighth, seven thirty a.m. to nine a.m. at the Columbia event.
I'm happy to go, but if I'm planning, I won't be there. I'll say yes.
Okay.
You'll probably be done by then.
I, I...
I've said that last year.
It starts at seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
I will, I will say yes.
Okay, thank you.
It was the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
On all of those registered?
Don't worry, if I'm planning, I may too.
It's the first?
I won't be there either, but I have feeling we'll be done by then.
Yeah, May twenty-eighth.
I never had two of us there.
Um, okay, so Ben, I received, and I'll pass this down so you guys all can look at it. It's the same thing we receive whenever there's any change. Um, Depp out from the city of Algonah, um, brought over a notice of consultation to be held between the city of Algonah, state of Iowa, and all affected taxing entities concerning the proposed amendment number five to the Algonah urban renewal plan for the city of Algonah. And it's set for two o'clock P.M. on April twenty-eighth in the council chambers, which was yesterday. We got it yesterday, so, um, so, yeah.
Thursday, it comes in two P.M. on April twenty-eighth, okay?
So, um, yeah. So we got it yesterday and it was yesterday, so, um...
Appreciate the notice.
Yeah, well, it is dated April twenty-first, so they didn't give much notice to anybody. But I'll pass this along so you can look at it.
Okay.
You can't go to the hearing, but you can look at the notice. Um, okay, let's see. Next week, we have the first reading of amended ordinance one fourteen C for regulating the operation of all terrain vehicles and approving that reading. First reading of amended ordinance five twelve A establishing rules and regulations uh, for parks, preserves, parkways, playgrounds, rec centers, and other property of Cassuth County and approving that reading. Assigning a tax sales certificate and then our regular agenda stuff. A reminder, um, tonight at seven o'clock P.M., the annual meeting of the Cassuth Waste Management Association. If anybody wants to look at that agenda, I have it here. Um, I did forward you, um, an email and I think you have a notice on your desks too. Um, Thursday, May first, from six thirty to eight thirty P.M. at the Buffalo Creek Community Center in Titanca. There will be a proposed pipeline meeting, um, for anybody who wants to attend, so... I think I forwarded that to you, but just a reminder. And then... And that, that's it. I think that is all I got.
Okay. Okay, do we wanna go ahead with the board discussion quick then? Okay, Howard? Any meaning?
I have a meeting. Yeah, economic, I want to, I want to, I want to, I don't have any work. I want to take another problem. I don't have anything to report from that. It seemed like we had another meeting too. Oh, I went to the safety meeting with, like, the other party. Nice meeting. Nothing very shattering to report, I don't think.
Okay.
I had the emergency management meeting. Couple things that we talked about were, um, the debris management plan that, um, you know, evidently is quite daunting. I mean, that's quite a task. And whenever there's a disaster, I guess that's something that we probably need in place. And we have the example of the video of Spencer and what they, um, they had. That's, it was really sad actually to watch and see all of the debris and stuff. Um, so that was talked about, um, was talked about having an executive committee. Um, nothing was decided. Um, there's uplifting of the Tahoe is going to get done. So, I'm just assuming that means all the lights, sirens, whatever shades, um, there. Um, there's a quote. Um, trainings, there's gonna be, uh, training developing cybersecurity, resiliency for everyone, EWR one thirty-six, um, so that's something that could be attended. Other than that, we, we just kinda went over the lease, um, so that the people that were there were aware of all the different pieces that were in the lease and had good, good discussion about that and, uh, I think that kind of says most of it.
Okay.
Um, I had C I J B C meeting last week. It was a pretty extensive meeting, over three and a half hours. But, um, we talked about policies and procedures quite a bit. There's, there was one from, said we had some changes from, recommended from attorneys, so, I mean, we approved, um, to add and clarify on mandatory reporter stuff. Otherwise, we kinda did a brief rundown with, um, financials and all the rest of the normal reports due to the extent of closed session conversations about litigation, so that was the majority of the meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
Not that I can think of right now.
Okay, Josh?
I did not go to any meetings.
Okay.
Uh, I had Care Connections last Tuesday, immediately following our board meeting in, in Hyphal. And then, uh, um, there wasn't a whole lot going on, winding down activities. Um, received our last payment from the state that we'll get. Um, we'll probably meet on Zoom for May. Just, we have no grants or anything to go through because we're dissolving July first. So, we'll have an in-person meeting in June, just as a last hurrah and be done in July, so... Not a whole lot to report from that. Uh, I did also go to the secondary road safety meeting. It was nice to go to visit with some of the guys and, and take part in that. Um, I did get, it was probably one of my strangest phone calls, uh, since being on the Board of Supervisors. And I just, I don't think we have anything to do with cell towers going up in the rural area. There's a cell tower, I guess, going up in rural Titanca and this lady lives three miles away and she's concerned for her health. And didn't know if there's anything I could do about that cell tower. I didn't, I told her, "I don't think so," but I can ask.
I don't think so.
Okay. Took, took me off guard that day, but anyway, uh, that's all I have to report, so...
I do have one more thing. Um, the auditing firm is here this week.
Oh, right.
So, uh, they are getting our audit out.
Are they here now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, Phil, real quick, we'll do your, uh, do your two items here.
Which one to add first?
Uh, you have to appoint Dr. Allison Roush as deputy medical examiner and Brian Spry as medical examiner investigator effective four one twenty-five.
So, when we appoint people for either the deputy or for the, uh, examiner, has to be approved by the Board of Supervisors, then from there goes down to the state for them to approve. We did Dr. Roush back on January first, but for some reason it didn't get into their system in Des Moines. So it's just a formality to re-appoint her. And these have been, uh, approved and signed off on by Dr. Yelly, who is our official medical examiner for Cassuth County.
Okay. So, need a motion to appoint Allison and, and Brian? Motion by Haas? Second by Staker?
And, and it includes the effective four one twenty-five, your motion?
Yeah, that's what I was listed on the agenda here with that.
Alright.
Okay. Okay, any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. And then, discussion decision agreement for EMS to send someone to a training school for preventative maintenance on our ventilators.
So I put together an agreement quick. I have not read this past Todd Holmes yet. Uh, it's just something I put together. Uh, the issue I'm having is I forget to pursue this. Um, I think our best action is just to have the company come and do the preventative maintenance. I don't know if I have any employees that'd be willing to sign an agreement because there's no personal gain for them to do this. It's a gain for Cassuth County, not for them personally. So why would they sign an agreement? They have to pay something back that if it's not gaining them personally. So, that's one reason why I did not finish this sooner or take it on to Todd Holmes because I didn't wanna waste people's time with something if we weren't going to pursue it. So, if we wanna do the class, I think we're gonna have to just bite the bullet and send somebody to the class. And if we're not gonna do it, we'll just have Hamilton to come and do the preventative maintenance. I don't, personally, I don't know which way's the best. I mean, we talked about this last time, you know, which way's the best? I don't have a glass ball to know what the future's gonna bring, what they're gonna do with these preventative maintenance, so, um, yeah. I don't have a perfect answer which way's the best option to go, unfortunately. It'd be kinda nice to do in house because we could do it as time goes, but...
If, if Todd has not reviewed this yet, we're, we're not looking for a motion today then, or?
I just wanna, I just, I guess I'm looking for direction. Do we wanna continue? Because if we're gonna continue with this agreement, I'm not gonna waste Haas' time to take it to him because I don't have any employees that'll sign it.
Oh, well, okay, I see.
So there's no value to them, you say, to, the... Personally, there's no value to them to take this course.
Wasn't the issue when we talked about it that they could transfer, uh, A B C D county down the road and they'd be, even they'd qualify to a supervisor's equipment?
But that would be a gain to that company, not to that employee.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and my con, my concern with the whole thing was always that, you know, this company, Hamilton, they do it all the time. That's what they do. You know, you're kinda something, you gotta be kept up with that. And to me, I was more concerned with the employee feeling... I don't know if burden is the right word, but...
Responsible.
Responsible.
And we did address that responsibility because that is a concern.
Yeah, and that was my concern, being responsible for that, which is something they only do once a year. Um, to me, that would be a, it's a really big responsibility and if you stick with the firm that does it all the time, they're used to many different scenarios, so that, that's why I had voted no in the past.
You know, looking at all that stuff, we're probably best to have them do it this year and see where things play out in the future. Because this is all new, this change is all new.
Yeah, especially the timeline of it, I think we might be best to just have them do it this year and maybe evaluate it further and go from there, but, yeah.
I don't know. I don't wanna waste Haas' time with the agreement, you know, if we weren't gonna pursue it and stuff and, you guys' time as well. I think that's our, probably our best option right now. I'll get a quote from them so we know exactly what the cost is gonna be. I mean, I have a tentative quote, but not a permanent quote, and then we'll proceed from there. Okay.
Sounds good.
Awesome.
That's it, I think.
That's all I have.
Alright, thanks Phil.
Thanks. Have a great day.
You too. Okay, Doug, thanks for your patience.
Sure.
Yeah, we're ready for the, to go through the Iowa DOT Secondary Road Budget Program.
I'm just going to, uh, allow enough. Here's a copy after everything's...
Thank you very much.
For motion, there's a copy of everything. That will be presented. Just gonna look at this format. You want me to turn off this one?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, is that, is that good enough for everyone?
Yeah, that's good.
That's good.
That's fine, okay.
If it was gloomy outside, no, but it's sunny outside, so...
Alright. So, uh, this is the secondary roads, uh, budget program, a presentation that we've done. Uh, this budget needs to be, uh, completed by the end of April, which we're falling under. And actually, the program, uh, with the interpretation is the middle of May. However, I want to get this taken care of so that we can move forward. Just kind of go through everything here. Our first go through the five-year, or excuse me, the budget. The column on the right is, uh, the revenue, starting for twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Uh, we anticipate our ending balance to be four million, three hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars, eleven cents after this fiscal year. Uh, we are estimating that we'll receive two million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars from property taxes, a million dollars from local option sales tax, uh, regular road use taxes, six million, seven hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars. Uh, the, uh, farm market extensions for, this is for maintenance of roads, the extensions through towns that have a population less than five hundred. We anticipate that to be sixty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars, ninety cents of revenue. Time twenty-one, that's, uh, now ten, uh, ten years old, a little bit over ten years old, but that's all. Was increasing registrations, um, some driver's license fees and all, but we estimate we'll receive seven hundred fifty thousand, four hundred seven dollars, uh, for time twenty-one funds. Uh, then drainage district repair, we estimate thirty thousand dollars. Uh, driveway construction, seventy-five thousand dollars. Fuel sold to, sold to other county offices, one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, gravel pit, that would be, uh, land, uh, for the rental, agricultural rental of gravel pit property. The secondary road has thirty thousand. Other miscellaneous gives us, uh, seventy-three thousand, five hundred. That would be sales of used equipment. Uh, some...
Yes.
Some sort of rebates with, uh, fuel and electricity. Um, but our total mis, uh, total miscellaneous receipts is three hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, giving us total receipts with the balance and everything, sixteen million, eighty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and one cent. Now, if you look at the budget, the last page of the budget, that's our estimated expenditures. Um, again, on the furthest right column, administration, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred ninety dollars. Engineering, seven hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars. Giving us a total of administration and engineering of nine hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars. Uh, for construction, we've, uh, estimated our expense of one million dollars. Uh, roadway maintenance, bridges, roads, snow and ice control, traffic control, road clearing. Uh, we estimate that to be five million, four hundred fifty thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. General roadway, new equipment purchases of two million, equipment operations, two million... General roadway, new equipment purchases of $2 million, equipment operations, $2,540,500. Tools, $50,000. Real estate buildings, $200,000, giving us a total of $4,790,500. Giving us total expenditures of $12,114,405. Our balance at the end of fiscal year '26 is estimated to be $3,872,590.11. Giving us a total of resources of $16,86,995,11, $995.11, which is the same as the resources available there. Now we'll move on to the five-year construction program, which is another eight and a half by eleven sheet packet of information. And we'll start off with projects that are in the fiscal year, the accomplishment year to be completed this year. First project, fiscal year 2026, beginning July 1 of 2025, ending June 30 of 2026. This would be resurfacing the Bancroft Forest City Road, A42, from Highway 169 east nine miles to P64. We do have STP federal funds for that, $1,300,000 of federal funds to do that. And we'll use a million dollars of farm-to-market to complete that project. The next one would be a farm-to-market project on R14. Some of this depends on what our farm-to-market balance is and if we will have the ability to continue to borrow ahead on that. But we estimate this project would be $2.2 million. This would be cold-in-place recycling to go along with resurfacing. And we estimate that to be $2,200,000 for farm-to-market fund. We have three miles below A42, south of A42, that we would like to resurface in the next fiscal year. And that is estimated to be $750,000, and that would be using local funds, funds from Cusworth County to construct that. And then there's a small, one-mile paved road right on the county line. Again, local funds, I have been visiting with Hancock County, we would share the cost of this. It's approximately $250,000 for the whole project. Our share would be $125,000 of the local funds. So that would take care of the resurfacing. Then we would take what we call Michelson Marsh Bridge. That's on the north line of Section 12 of Portland Township. This would be using $1.4 million of urban renewal, which is in the capital funds portion of the county's budget to complete that project. This is a photograph of that. Some of the reasons that we need to get that replaced is this is an abutment pile deteriorating, a pier pile deteriorating. This is a bridge that we have high timber abutments, timber pitter, and another high timber abutment, two-span bridge. We have a few of these left in the county, we've been replacing some of those, a good one to get rid of. And then we have a project where we replace a culvert, this would be right north of Lone Rock, right on the west line of Section 30 of Greenwood Township. And we would be using $350,000 of local funds to pay for this. Right now, it's a paved road, we have a metal arch pipe in there. And we have a support that's constructed, that's actually underneath the road there, to keep the culvert from deflecting more. So this would be a good project to get done as well. That is all the projects in the fiscal year 2026. Now we move on to what we call the first priority year of fiscal year 2027. This would be doing some resurfacing up north. We have on A16, we resurfaced a couple of years ago. We, this is P30, we resurfaced to the west, this would finish it off, go over to Highway 169. And this would be farm-to-market funds, we would estimate that job to be $2,850,000. Farm-to-market fund, P66, this is a project from Highway 9, running up to A16, and resurfacing that seven miles. We estimate that to be $1.8 million of farm-to-market funding. And the last resurfacing project, this is right north of Ledyard, four-mile stretch of A21. And that was estimated a cost of $1 million, and we'd use local funds to resurface that. Next project is right around the corner from Michelson Marsh, this would be Michelson Marsh Bridge here. This is right on the west line. We estimate $1,000, $1,300,000 for the construction of that bridge. And we would use federal bridge funds to replace that. Another two-span, high-timber bridge, got this timber piling. This happens to be looking to the southeast of that bridge. Again, we have some deterioration in piling and wings, holding up everything. And then we would use federal funds to build, this would be on what we call the Antone Blacktop. North end of Union Slough, it's on A40, and this would be replacing this bridge. Right now, I think we have that signed as a one-lane-only bridge. And we would be using federal funds to replace that, north line of 14 of Ramsey Township. And that would be all the construction in the first priority year. Again, here's some photographs, we've got some problems where the backing plank is lower than what the stream is. Causes some problems during high-water events with some settling behind those abutments. Moving on to fiscal year 2028, or the second priority year, resurfacing B14. This would be from Highway 169 east, 10.9 miles, using farm-to-market funds. And that is estimated $2.7 million. We can continue with local money to construct, to resurface some projects. This would be south of Taitanka, south of that B19. Or it's between B19 and B14, three miles, resurface out with local funds. Continue on B14.
Do you have a blank slide in between?
No, I think my. PDF is not loading all the way.
Yep. Have to reopen it. Already on VPN.
Well, I see why I lost a connection. Oh shoot, I don't have the right computer.
Can I make grab there?
This is unconnected now. Now I just need to get. I'm just going to go towards the. All right. Crossing my fingers.
Do you remember what page I'm on?
Yeah, we are, local funds on B14, it's fiscal year 2028. Resurfacing B14 east of Taitanka. And this would be $800,000 of local funds to complete that construction. And then we have a three-mile stretch of B16, between P64 and P60, right south of B14. Then would need to be resurfaced, and that's another $800,000 of local funds for that. We have a bridge to the east of Ledyard that is eligible for federal funds. We would use federal aid and swap funds, we estimate the cost of that to be through $800,000. This is an old DOT bridge, narrow, we have some spalling underneath of the deck that has some, we have some concerns on the shape of the deck on that, the superstructure. That is one of the reasons that we have that in our program for replacement. We will start now on the third priority year, fiscal year 2029. Start off with resurfacing P30, this would be all the way from south of Lone Rock up to Highway 9, the north-south only. This would be $3.3 million of STP funds, which we have been awarded, and some farm-to-market funds to resurface all of those. And we also have some resurfacing B30, this would be from Highway 17 over to Smith Lake. Nine and a half miles of resurfacing, and we would use $2.6 million, or $2.6 million farm-to-market funds to replace or to resurface that. Farm-to-market fund, P44, that's right along where the transfer station is at, B19 down to B14, or B30. Five miles of resurfacing, $1,350,000. Local funds to resurface the remainder of P44 to the east of Highway 169, that is $400,000. And then BR project for a bridge located right north of A42 on P16. We estimate that to be a $1 million project, that would be federal aid and swap funds that would construct that. Continuous concrete slab bridge with concrete abutments. We do have backing plank, timber backing plank there that we are showing some deterioration, and we have some concerns on that, the item, the substructure. And then we also have a local bridge over by Bruce Hanson's, anyone knows where Bruce lives? This would be on the west line of Section 34 of Buffalo Township. We would use $375,000 to construct that. Single I-beam span, high-timber abutments. And again, we have with those high-timber abutments concerns. And then finally, the 2030 program, which is the fourth priority year. We would apply for STP federal funding to resurface McGregor from Algonah West to P60 and Laverne Sexton Road. We would use farm-to-market funds to finish the McGregor Road from P60 over to Highway 17, $2 million of farm-to-market. There's a one-mile stretch of P16 right north of Winmore, $290,000. That should say local funds, says farm-to-market, that would be local funds for that project. Local funds to resurface, this would be right to the west of Cornwith. Three-mile stretch would be 55, from P66 over to Highway 17, $850,000 of local funds. A five-mile stretch of P46, local funding for that, $1.4 million. And P56, center blacktop from B55 north to Highway 18, $1.4 million of local funds. Then we have a bridge that's been in our program for quite some time that we are monitoring. It is a concrete slab, and if you see, there must not have been enough concrete cover over the transverse, the top layer of transverse reinforcing. And we do have some problems there, we've been monitoring it. If it gets to a point where we need to, we will need to do a concrete overlay project on that. I kept it in the fifth year of the program just in case, we do need to do that. And then there's a culvert up on the north line of Section 11 of Harrison Township, that is part of the, I think it's 166 Drainage District. They did some maintenance on the open ditch some time ago. We have a metal pipe, again, we have a structure underneath of it to keep things from deflecting on top. But that would be a good one to remove, and we'd use local money on that. So with that program, you can see in 2026, the amount of swap dollars, which are dollars from the state that run through the farm-to-market account. Farm-to-market dollars, we have, for the swap, we have $360,000, farm-to-market, we have $19,000, $19,250,000. Local money, $9,000, $9,325,000, federal aid, $7,840,000. And special funds, which in this case would be urban renewal, $1.4 million, giving you a total of $38,175,000. So that is the five-year program. Projects, we got maps, there are projects that are under contract right now. We have the bridge right north of Sexton. We have the resurfacing of P30 from Highway 18 down to B63. We have a federally funded job that is on B55, and that is running from Highway 169 east to P60. And then we have the Hanner Road, the farm-to-market. And then we have the Hanner Road, the farm-to-market, farm-to-market funds on that from P sixty over to Highway seventeen. And then we have the rest of the maps that are included in that. All those projects in the five-year program at current funding, I do not believe we would get them constructed. And it might take six or seven years to complete that. If you look at our budget, you just look at some pie graphs, our total receipts, again, sixteen million eighty-six thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars. Total expenditures, sixteen million eighty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. If you look at the secondary road budget with the the total expenditures minus the ending balance, it's twelve million two hundred fourteen thousand four hundred five dollars. General roadway is thirty-nine point two percent. Roadway maintenance is forty-four point six. Construction is eight point two percent. Engineering is six point three percent. And administration is one point six percent of the total budget or total expenditures, excuse me. If you also add in the farm-to-market and the federal aid and the increment financing project, which totaled up to be five point nine million dollars of construction, you can see where roadway maintenance is thirty-one point eight percent of that total. General roadway is twenty-six point four percent of the total. Thirty-eight point one of the dollars spent is in construction. Engineering is four point three percent of the total expenditures and administration is one point one percent of the total expenditures of eighteen million. Along with the handouts, there is a table of pavements that are not programmed. At the end of the, of the twenty thirty fiscal year, the fourth priority year, this is a list of projects that would still, the life of those pavements would be greater than twenty years, which for design life, that's what we use for design life. So we would have a couple of pavements that would be twenty-six years, twenty-five years, twenty-four. You can see that the miles of road of twenty-six-year-old pavements is down there, twelve miles. Twenty-five-year pavements, we'd have ten miles. Twenty-four-year-old pavements, sixteen and three-quarter miles. Twenty-three-year-old pavement is one mile. Twenty-two is fourteen miles and twenty-one-year-old pavement is twenty-one miles. Total of seventy-four miles of road that would be greater than our design life on those. And then there's a map, color-coded, for those twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six year-old pavements. However, I do see there is a typo on that. I need to get a new one on the right-hand side. That should be going up to the same, it should be twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. I'll have to get a new map for you on that. I see there's a typo, I apologize for that. And then I also included bridges. We have a couple of bridges that are on gravel roads, but we have structures that are not programmed that are on gravel roads. And these timber bridges that are listed, a design life for those would probably be around thirty-five years. And you can see where we are approaching forty, some of them forty-five years for those. And we also have some bridges that are some steel I-beams and concrete slabs that nineteen fifty-one is one that jumps out at me down in Sherbat Township, but those are not programmed now. And hopefully, we will not have any problems with those, but just to make you aware. And then there's a location map of where these are located as well. With that, my presentation is complete. If, if the board would approve the twenty twenty-six, the fiscal year twenty twenty-six five-year construction program and the five-year budget as presented, we can complete this process.
Can I make the motion to approve?
Yeah, okay, we have a motion by Garmin then to approve. Second. Motion by Garmin, second by Haas. Any discussion on the Iowa DOT budget or motion made?
For the special TIF funds, is there any request or proposal you have at this point for those future years, twenty-seven through thirty and beyond?
I can certainly put some cost estimate, estimates towards that to, but I, if, if the board is, wants to, is about getting some loans to complete that, that would definitely help out these, the program and the structures and pavements that were not programmed. So as the board directs me, I will take, I will do whatever you want. But there, there is a need, I feel, for that. There. If, if the intention is to continue as is, there needs to be more revenue. And what I say there is-
I'm, I'm lost in the process here, so I'm just trying to keep up with the process. Do you have to schedule something and, and take out the loan or?
Or eliminate work.
I understand, I understood that part. So what are you looking for or what do you want, what do you want to have? I'm, I'm stuck.
I was just curious what the requests or if there was any thoughts of future requests for that source of funding. We plugged a lot of projects into the TIF plan and I know some, a couple of them, especially in the first year we talked about, mentioned as TIF-eligible projects, but I didn't know if any of the other ones were or not or what the status was for that, to correlate that list of projects.
I think everything, I think everything that was, with the exception of the, it'd be two projects, one going out of Cornwith and one right south of Wesley. Those two projects that are in the five-year program are not eligible, otherwise they were, would have been listed in the increment financing as a project.
Everything else is listed.
Yes. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
That was fine.
Question, I, I have had a couple of people reach out to me in regards to Western Hills and I think maybe, I think maybe we discussed it briefly a year or two ago, but it is getting pretty bad out there and I, I mean, what is the, being it's a subdivision of the city, I know the county moves the snow out there.
Those are county roads.
Those are county roads. So is there, I mean, I guess I did drive out there and you about have to do a zigzag to go down the road to avoid-
Oh, excuse me, I think I went wrong subdivision. Western Hills?
Western Hills.
That is, that is right to the west of Woodland Hills.
No.
No.
Western Hills is east from Cornwith.
It'd be up, up the hill and then you take, take a left.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, those are county roads. I, I've got the-
That's right, there's a lot of them out there.
That's originally what I was thinking and then I was, okay. Yes, those are county roads.
Okay, is, I mean, even if it's not, well, at some point, I guess something's gonna have to be done out there because you about have to zigzag to, to drive down the road.
I, I haven't been on that for a while.
Okay, might be worth going and driving.
There's a challenge there to get to the southern portion of that. There is a culvert that goes underneath of that road. Not a substantial size, but it would be a substantial project to get it completed. There's only one way for people to get in and out of there. It, it would be going over that. That culvert as it exists, the bottom is quite deteriorated to a point where it needs to be replaced. I'll go out there and take a look at it. When we did Woodland Hills, I think I hired a contractor and did another maintenance to take care of that.
Sure.
And we would do the very same thing there.
No.
So I, I, I'm sorry, I haven't been on that road recently, but it is, there's challenges also. I, I would hate to continue to, to put a new pavement on top of that without first taking that, taking that culvert and relaying a new pipe in there.
Sure.
And it's a twenty, fifteen to twenty-foot, if not more, cut. So it, it would be quite wide on the top end to get that completed. And there's the utilities that run through there, electricity. I think there's a gas line and, and all that. Like any other project. But thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, it'd be worth going and looking at that, yeah. Anyway, other, any other questions, discussion? Okay, if not, roll call vote please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
No.
Wexler?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes. Motion carries four to one.
Yeah, if you, you and Tammy sign that and Tammy, if you will keep, keep that approved copy there and if you can sign that for me and I'll keep that approved copy. There should be two things for you, Carter. Yeah, perfect.
I think I got them both there.
You can give those one of us. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Then we have construction in the right-of-way.
Okay, there is one request to, for construction within the road right-of-way. This is West Bend Municipal Utilities and in fact, when, earlier in our discussion, when Mike Bondstetter talked about a driveway that washes out, this driveway to Winkle Horse that's in the packet that, that marked there, that location, that's the same spot where water will run over and it goes underneath the driveway there, just to give you a little bit of an idea. But this is a West Bend Utilities, they need to plow electric power beginning at two oh five, one hundred fifty street west, approximately a hundred feet to the first power pole. This is so they'll continue their electricity north. I think there's new construction going on up there for Winkle Horse. But I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
I'll make the motion to approve the request. Second. Kyle is shaking his head first, second by Stecker. Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor of approving work in the right-of-way, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries Yanos.
Here's the signature page, Carter. Thank you.
Is the one in our folder for corn country just discussion?
That's discussion, yes. They have approached, approached us about crossing that gravel road and they'd like to get that completed. This would be on two hundred thirty street. And my understanding, there are two crossings there. There has been some private tile that has been run north through the Alt Farm and Corn Country is proposing to put onto this private tile. We are waiting for the proper paperwork to get back, using the same procedure as we've given other people. If they would get that back to us and they would want to cross those roads, are there any concerns for the board supervisors as far as making sure that they have that permission from the board? Or would it be okay for me to give them through that approval?
Should we, have any concerns?
I, it's gonna be according to our policy. We would require that all the paperwork be, be brought to our office and in possession. So it's just a formality, a way to the next meeting.
I don't either, as long as we got our documentation, let's-
Okay, we'll make sure we have that. Thank you.
Anything else for discussion?
Yeah, so is Cory here today to the Pino?
I don't know, I do not know.
Maybe if, could somebody possibly intercom him and ask him to come over? We had a little conversation yesterday with Maria, Marie?
Maria.
Maria.
Anyway, if you could be present, I'll go over some stuff that I've got for secondary roads.
Hey, good morning. Hey, good, good. Hey, are you in the office by chance? Okay, could, we're here having a discussion with Doug. Could you run over here to the boardroom for a couple minutes? Okay, we'll see you in a minute then. Thanks. Bye.
That's ambitious, a couple minutes.
All right. I didn't want him to say no. Didn't want him to say no. Come over for an hour and I say, I'm busy.
Okay, Bancroft Forest City Road, we are planning to crack fill that. We've hired Blacktop Services to do our crack filling and it sounds like tomorrow they're gonna start that, so that would be A forty-two, starting at Highway one sixty-nine or the west, the east side, working west, one of the two, but just so you know that. We also have been visiting with Union Slough employees. They are doing some burning and they may close A forty, which is, we call it the Antone Road. There is some area there that they burn and if the smoke is in the right direction, we have closed the road just so people, if the smoke is, is blocking vision. We have our open positions, we're getting some equipment quotes out to people. So we have that. Then with the landfill or the transfer station, Kasuth Waste Management Association, we have a meeting tonight for our annual meeting. We also have cleanup day, May ten of twenty twenty-five. That's in week and a half, Saturday after this next one. And also, it's time for the comprehensive plan, so I will be placing some time on the board's agenda to talk about Kasuth Waste Management Association and comprehensive plans for that. Hi Cory. Hi Cory. Then, just talking a little bit about the solar ordinance. Tammy, Cory and I spoke with Maria Brownwell yesterday. Uh, we had a conference phone call with her virtual meeting, whatever you wanna call it. Um, and Maria was asking for some information, some guidance. And before we give her guidance, we wanted to make sure uh we were all on the same page as far as how this uh ordinance is supposed to be written. Um, one thing she she wants to know is uh the process, the guidance on the process. Um, there are different options for uh solar uh ordinance to be approved or so somebody to come and get a permit and for that to be approved. It can be as simple as the Board of Adjustment acting on a uh a special use permit, conditional use permit, which is here are the rules for this. If they follow it all, the conditional use permit would be uh would be granted. And that would be no matter how the land is zoned. Uh, there is also a way that uh the Planning and Zoning Commission, you could ask that uh there'll be an overlay uh zoning, which the Planning and Zoning Commission would approve that a piece of property could be zoned uh that could be part of a solar farm. The Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation to the board supervisors and the board supervisors approve that zoning change. Uh, then you could have a conditional use permit where the Board of Adjustment then would make sure that the plan was all uh correct according to all the rules that are set out. And that would be the way of taking it. Planning and Zoning Commission can recommend to the board supervisors that uh they approve of the zoning change and the board supervisors can say, no, we do not approve or we do agree with the recommendation. Uh, they can recommend that it not be approved. Ultimately, the decision goes back to the board supervisors. Uh, no matter what the Planning and Zoning Commission um says, they will be the ones that uh make the decision on that overview. Um, the other situation is like our wind ordinance, the planning uh the the uh the ordinance is written in a way that the board supervisors are the decision makers. The board supervisors go through and do all the public hearing, listen to all the comments, goes through the process uh and makes the final decision. And the other one is if you would like to just go ahead and uh say that it's only gonna be allowed in uh in industry, business, agriculture, uh different zoned properties. But we do need some advice, some direction on what the board sees as the process and what they would like to do for that.
Did did she have any suggestions as far as what would work?
I think the first two um were her suggestions, whether the the um Board of Adjustment makes those decisions or the board of supervisors. But Doug had brought up that um you guys make the decisions for the wind ordinances and you know, that may be the direction you wanted to go. Um, she didn't have any preference really, um it was up to you guys, but it did seem like those first two were were the more logical
Yeah.
um ones, but am I correct in saying that?
Correct.
Yeah.
What uh what's planning and zoning do, what what do they have power to now?
Well, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a I look at that as being kind of a fact gathering body that goes out and does some work for the board supervisors and then recommends to the board uh a decision. But the recommendation, yes. Uh, then, but ultimately, the board supervisors still, they they are the ones that make a decision for uh different uh boundaries of different zoned areas, um ordinances. Uh, the the Planning and Zoning Commission will recommend the ordinance or will review the ordinance for that. But that that's the way I look at it. The Board of Adjustment, they can grant conditional use permits. Um, they can grant variances. Um, they go through again a public hearing, but they they are a decision-making uh board. Now, it's my, there's there's different ways uh you can appeal. A person can appeal to the board supervisors and the board supervisors can can uh ask for the Board of Adjustment to uh to review their decision. You can also go to district court and district court can make some decisions. But the Board of Adjustment is more of a decision-making uh board. The wind energy was such a emotional decision. The board felt it was important that they do mostly. We had, we had members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, members of the Board of Adjustment, which is volunteer. We had members that were really concerned. They did not um they did not feel comfortable doing some of their work because of the volunteer work that was necessary. Um, I don't know if solar is to this to that uh degree. I could be wrong. But the reasoning behind the wind energy was that the board was going to listen to it all and make all the decisions.
We treated the carbon pipeline with it in a similar way as well.
Well, that's going, that's going through the Board of Adjustment for all conditional.
But the box stopped with the board supervisors, I mean.
Well, they wrote it, they wrote the ordinance, but ultimately, it will be the Board of Adjustment that will grant conditional use.
Sure. Okay.
There for that.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Our special use permit, if we were uh more of the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Solar doesn't, solar definitely doesn't seem to be as controversial. For sure.
Yeah. I don't know that it currently is, but I guess the potential to get heated emotions in and I think for some of the same reasons that um Doug just laid out, I mean, the the volunteer aspect of both those boards. I think we might be better off to structure it similar to our current wind ordinance. That's my two cents.
Seems to some level of consistency in in process. So I'm agreeing with you. The 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 down, the downside to that is if there is one, and I'm not sure if there is, but if there is a downside, it's just you're not giving them any authority. Like they really want it to. So.
Depends on the member of.
We've, we've had a change in a membership. You know, if your, if your desire is to um frame it a little bit like the wind energy, you can certainly uh tell Maria that.
Yeah. Do you have a recommendation?
It's it's gonna be the same amount of work for the zoning administrator. So uh just deal with which which people the zoning administrator needs to deal with.
Wendy?
If you, if you go through, I I will say this, if you, if you choose the option where you you have the zoning, the planning commission doing work and the Board of Adjustment, that makes, that's gonna make more work for the zoning administrator. And I know that there are counties that have overlay districts. I don't see where that that decision-making process would be in Kasuth County. We we have, we have so much agriculture, it's pretty much all all the same. So I don't think that we need to say anything about rezoning anything in order to have property that is zoned correctly. And I don't think that we need to say that it can only be on agriculturally zoned as well. I'd just say that it can be built uh where where a landowner or where an owner would like to be built. But then you have your setbacks and qualifications for those types of things.
I'd I'd probably agree with, you know, with two of you that going through a similar structure as as the wind ordinance.
The one thing that works well with that is from the point of from the point of conception to the point of approval, the board knows all the steps that a developer or an owner needs to go through, what they're meeting, how they're meeting it. They there is.
Consistency.
Well, it's just knowledge.
We should have all the information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you do, if you do receive a phone call, you either we have not been made aware of this or yes, we have been made aware of it and this is why.
Mm-hmm.
Or you know, decision. You're you're in the in the know of it.
Yeah, I think that helps answer any questions or confusion about what a public approach. You have that information that you can answer on the spot rather than needing to check and get back to someone or whatever.
Well, I think that uh unless somebody else has concerns, we would just tell Maria to uh go through it like the uh similar to the wind energy. Um, we, Maria had a question on occupied residence. Um, in the wind energy, occupied residence is uh a residence that people are living in. Not that they're able to live in it, but they are living in it.
My interpretation of IDI.
Right. Well, believe me.
I believe you.
Um, we also have uh it it's not an occupied, but it's a uh, I can't remember the name of it. But it, for example, houses of worship or something, church.
Sure.
Uh, so there would be a period of time that people live in this occupied. How would you like your occupied residence definition for solar?
I would say
I would say it's taken.
Same, as far as a person living in the property. I guess I mean, anybody.
So you don't wanna include um temporary or or not a temporary, but a
Well, as when you were saying that, I was thinking even like if someone had a cabin on a property for temper seasonal type thing, but I don't know if there's like, say, a hunting cabin.
Yeah, recreational area.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how many of those would be in the county per se or what level of prevalence that would be, but.
Be.
Without.
No, go ahead, Howard.
Without uh, without putting a slant on it, just just at all, no negative or positive. So you, if you start talking about temporary or cabins, things like that, does somebody run out and throw something up? Just uh, again, I I'm not, I'm trying not to make that sound rower.
Yeah.
Rower. And I don't, it's hard to, if it maybe it's hard to define, I don't know.
I pull a camper on my property and I'm living there, so it's an occupied residence?
Yeah.
Is that kind of what you're going for?
Well, yeah, or or less, if you know.
Put up a tent and that's my, yeah, I know.
Uh, yeah, it might be difficult to define to some degree, but I I wouldn't want it to be quite that. So throwing up a, throwing up a tent.
Things that come to mind, you know, you get in an argument about residency for voting purposes is over over half the time. And I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure I wanna be that restrict, you know, if somebody, if somebody lives there five months out of the year, you know, I'd say they're living, I'm for this purpose, they're living there, you know, type of thing. But I don't know how you define it.
Our our wind energy has occupied residence, which shall mean a building designed for and actually occupied on a permanent basis. That's occupied residence. And then they have non-residential building, which shall mean any building other than a residence that is regularly occupied by humans and that is open to the public, sells goods or services for a public, religious or other nonprofit institution.
Does that mean more your church?
So that is, that would not be necessarily a hunting lodge. Or I I would interpret that um because it's open to the public.
That was the second one, but the first one.
The first one is
Permanently occupied.
Permanently occupied.
That doesn't, and I'm not, I'm not trying to nitpick. I'm not a lawyer either. That leaves, that leaves me to think, well, I'm 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 permanently there three or four months out of the year, you know, and and again, I'm not, I'm I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt. I just.
Right. That's our, if that is, that's already an occupied. If if the, if the argument is over whether it's an occupied residence, that's, that's gonna be there. I don't know how you define.
I don't, I don't know if you, if you could, if it gets pretty arbitrary, somebody says, hey, I'm I'm I've got a residence there. And we say, uh, sorry, support that.
Part of it is your setbacks still
Yeah.
from from an occupied residence um and uh no residents there.
I don't wanna reinvent the wheel. It's good, it's good enough.
Okay.
It's good enough, in my personal opinion, if it's good enough for the wind ordinance, it should be good enough for the
Um, and then she just uh she emphasized the need for justification for setbacks and height limitations. Um, making sure that that's not just some arbitrary number. Uh, she was concerned with the twenty-foot height. Uh, in agriculture, we have thirty-foot height in agriculture is what the height limit is supposed to be. Most, most ordinances contain thirty, thirty-five feet for a height. So if we're gonna limit it to twenty, we need to have a good reason why. And the setbacks too, uh, most of the occupied residences setbacks are somewhere two hundred, uh two hundred fifty. Ours was double that. So uh the justification there, and I think some of that is gonna come through uh with um public hearings for that.
And she needed to know a setback from the right of way. We didn't have that included, so.
Yeah, and after discussion, I think that there again, that uh it it isn't gonna be as much as what a wind turbine is, but it isn't going to be uh as simple as just putting up a shop or something, so.
I'm trying to remember back to some of the other numbers. I saw it wasn't like fifty to a hundred feet fairly common for right of way.
Yes.
So you've got, I'm sure, room to do work if something's intended now or in the future.
And then Maria asked just if any developers had an opportunity to comment or if they've already talked to any developers. I did say that Mid-American Energy had a person representative, so I think, I think the board is doing well there, so. And I think, did your email talk about battery storage?
Yes.
And we, there was a public hearing on battery storage for a solar farm. She was, excuse me, a wind energy system. She was not aware.
No.
That batteries were being used in that capacity. She thought it was only solar.
Yeah.
So I, I, I told her I thought that battery storage could be used as a conditional use permit, but I could be wrong, the board could certainly, if they would like, place some limits on battery storage as well.
And then Doug, she did want to talk to, or have us mention that we might want to think about increasing our moratorium through the end of the year, instead of just having it nine months, since this is a work in progress and it may not be done by the end of June.
We indicated to her that.
Yeah.
We would definitely be increasing that, so the reason that she didn't know if she, if we wanted to have an ordinance prior to the expiration, then we said that we would go ahead and take care of that ourselves.
Because Todd.
We would just let her know that what the moratorium is at is continued.
Is that something we've talked to Todd about yet, to extend that or?
For the, for the wind energy, we just simply had a resolution that it expires this day. We do not have all of our goals fulfilled, so we will extend it for another six months, nine months, whatever. It's a simple process for the wind energy and that works. Just do the very same thing.
Yeah, that'd be funny.
Cory will do the very same thing.
Yeah. I think that'd be fine, I just, I'm obviously still running by Todd to make sure he's reviewing it, but that should be fine.
I'm, I'm not pushing it, I'm not in a hurry, I have no dog in the hunt, but I hate that we, we kind of keep picking the can down the road, you know, if we give six months, we'll take six months type of thing, you know. If somebody, I'm not waiting, I have no, I don't even know of anybody who's waiting, I think you said in one. I hate to.
I do not people that are waiting, but.
Hate to, I don't know, we'll get a turn, because obviously, we're probably not going to.
I mean, you have to have a process of creating the ordinance, it's like your, is it the third reading of the animal ordinance this morning?
Yeah.
It just takes, you got to publish, you know, some of that just takes five, six weeks just to go through and get it completed.
Yeah. Yep.
And the landowners, that even if they've already signed for projects, usually there's a five-year option period anyway, so our extra six months is not going to even affect anything they're doing.
If it's.
Usually.
Say, okay, so if we extend it to six months or whatever and we're done with this ordinance, the end of August, is then the moratorium done then? It's up then, just automatically?
The, with the wind energy, if my memory is correct, we, the moratorium was extended, whatever, six months. In that first month, it was taken care of when the board issued the final passage and final resolution. One of the points was that the moratorium was no longer in effect. And this ordinance is how developers will go for it.
Well, I realize, I understand the time constraints we're under with the current moratorium, but I'd like to continue seeing this, I don't want to wait until the end of the year. I mean, honestly, I want to keep.
And we can say three months.
Keep the discussion going so that it can be finalized.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be six months, she just recommended.
Well, I'm just saying, even if that's what the board wants, that's fine, but not that we prolong it that long. We keep moving it forward to finalize it.
Yeah, I don't drop the ball.
Yeah.
Well, of course, if, if, if we, if we say, and I have, I have no passion here, but if we say six months and I don't want to pick on Ms. Maria, but she's like, I got all the time in the world, you know, I guess maybe I'd be in favor of saying three months if it's done by, you know, September or whatever. Is it June 30th, is that correct, or is it June 1st?
July 1st.
Seven, nine months, October 1, 2024.
I, I, again, I have no passion here, I just, just keep it moving. If we just, from, if we, it can be six months, but we say we're going to keep it moving and question her, is there any reason, we said six months, but can we keep this moving?
Yeah.
We'd like not to take six months.
For sure. We still have two months, really. I know that's probably not enough time, but we still have two months of this.
Maybe extend to three would give us by.
If it's okay with the board, Cory and I will continue to visit a little bit with Maria and hopefully we can get a draft out from the board to review.
Oh.
For terms.
I don't want to just burn time here. So you talked about we have to justify the height thing, the height restriction.
Well, I think some of that is just.
And what was 30 become the agricultural now?
Yeah.
What was that?
A height limit on buildings, which I've never. Well, it, again, this is 1973 and some of their guidance, and you're in agriculture, so you're exempt from zoning.
All right.
Yada, yada, yada.
I'm not getting compliance, so.
But it is supposed to be.
Okay. If you can handle it, handle it.
Well, we, we'll get something going and Cory and I will go from there.
Yeah, something that already happened.
Okay.
That's all that I have for discussion.
Anything else for Doug or Cory? Okay, well, thanks, guys.
Of course, you can get along well.
Yep. It's going good.
Great.
Um, so I don't know what your guys' plan is for the rest of the agenda, but.
Handbook and health insurance?
Yeah, because, a couple of things. One, Renee is kind of waiting to see what time we need her.
Oh.
And then I have a webinar at 1:00 that I have to do, so maybe it doesn't take more than a half hour, but I have to do that webinar, so I don't know what your guys' plans are, what's your thinking?
Well.
Is there anything urgent with Renee that we have to talk about this week or is that something?
She wants to talk to you, she requested it be on the agenda today.
I didn't know if it was urgent, like this week or if it's something we can do next week.
She wanted to do it today.
Okay.
And she predicted a set time.
And, and I've been communicating with her this morning.
How long is your webinar?
I don't know, I'm hoping no more than a half hour, but it's hard to say.
And it's at 1:00?
Yeah.
I mean, is Renee available now?
But we have to close, because it's an exempt session, we have to adjourn and then.
No.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Gotcha, so we need to have our meeting finished.
Yeah.
Can we push off the handbook and health insurance for today till next?
Well, the handbook for sure, but the health insurance.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it, yeah.
The health insurance one is kind of a.
That one could take a while or could not.
It could take a while, but I mean, it also is putting off, I mean, they're trying to get like.
Yeah, open enrollment coming up.
Coming up and, I mean, that one's.
When is that scheduled for again, is that towards the end of May?
May 29.
28, I think is what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think that it would hurt for, we, we could do health insurance next Tuesday. As long, I mean, that, we don't want to go push much further than that.
We have to try to get it finalized next.
We need to get some.
For sure.
But I, I don't foresee a long discussion there.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would just back up me then.
Next one, is that time is good for you, I don't know.
So post-fun.
Post-fun those two. And then, then, yeah, we can motion adjourn and I'll second it. And, yeah, any discussions adjourned? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, meaning adjourned at 12:21.
Okay, if you want to give her a call.
I will.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who wants to dial the number?
Are she on, please? Or, well, recall on her own, no, because that's been really staticky. That phone has been bad. Can I just call her on her own speaker or?
Sure, however you want to do it.
That's fine. That works.
Tell me when you're ready for the number.
Oh, it's not her number?
We, I don't know, is it 2492467?
Actually, that one, that one should be pretty clear, you could dial it on that one. Do you want me to dial one? Try that one, try that one.
Okay, you got to press nine and then 515. 2492467. Push speaker, is it on speaker, is it a mic on?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got your recording off time?
Oh, shoot.
Renee.
Hi Renee, this is Josh here in the boardroom at Cassis County.